Sorry, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the January. Does somebody have sound on? Are we off? Okay, that's good. Okay. So you. Hello. Okay, I think we're good. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the January 8th, 2025 regularly scheduled meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board. The meeting is called to order at 5:31 PM. To access translation in Zoom, please click. For access translation in Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. If you are here in Dejane, you may pick up a headset French translation in the back corner of the auditorium. The board is about to go into closed session, but before we do, we are here to listen to public comment on closed session items. Individuals wishing to speak on closed session items listed. If you're here in the auditorium and you haven't already done so yet, please submit a WCC USD public comment card, which you can find on the entryway table, or if you are participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. If you're accessing the meeting by phone, press star nine. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. Speaking time shall not be transferred from one person to another. There is also no substitution of speakers. We alternate between a Zoom comment and an in-person comment. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time as if it were your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comments. The items listed on the closed session agenda tonight are. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Case number C22-02774. Public employee appointment, volunteer positions. Conference with labor negotiators, school supervisors association. Is there any public comment on these items?
Yes, our first public comment is Francis Cortez.
Good evening, board members. My name is Francis Cortez, president of United Teachers of Richmond. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote on the proposed reassignments in a public setting as required under Education Code 350530, 35 subsection E. The community looks to our board to hold the district accountable and ensure transparency in decisions that profoundly impact our students and school communities. Midyear reassignments disrupt stability for our students, particularly those in underserved schools who rely on literacy and math coaches and ELD supports. These changes are short-term Band-Aids to staffing challenges encountered the district's stated equity goals. The board has the authority and responsibility to vote on these transfers to ensure that they are neither arbitrary or capricious. Tonight, I ask you to prioritize the voices of educators, students, and families directly impacted. Please exercise your oversight to keep the district accountable and equitable. Thank you.
If I may, point of order. This is not agendized as a closed session item, nor is it agendized as an open session item tonight. If you want to speak on this item, please save your item for item B8 public comment in open session. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mark. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, good evening. My name is Mark Mitchell. I'm the executive director of United Teachers of Richmond. You're going into closed session tonight. You're likely to be accompanied by the attorney Ms. Miola that the district uses as its legal counsel. I want to remind the board that the legal counsel Ms. Miola works for the board, not for the interim superintendent or for district staff. I want to just remind the board that they may be discussing items or attempt to discuss items in closed session that are more appropriately and properly held in public session. I want to remind the board of its responsibilities not to discuss issues that are not properly subject to closed session discussion in closed session. The constituents, the educators, and other employees, the families and students want to hear the discussion on things that should be properly held in public session and want to encourage you to defer on the side or to err on the side of caution and make sure that all discussions regarding these involuntary transfers or other issues are done in public session as required by law. Thank you.
So again, this item is not agendized for closed session or open session tonight. Should you wish to make comments on this item, please move it to open session B8 public comment. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Gabby Michaletti.
Good afternoon, Clerk Canyana, trustees, and interim superintendent Moses. I'm before you today to respectfully request that you add to your agenda, publicly discuss, and vote on the involuntary transfers set to take place on January 21st before your next board meeting. If you seek trust from the community, as so often stated, you need to build it through being forthright with decisions, particularly decisions that interrupt so many people's lives. I want to make sure that you also understand that this is not a long-term solution to our vacancy crisis. In fact, it will only serve to exacerbate it. Many educators are tired of being moved on the whims of superintendents and have put in for early retirement or to go on leave. In addition, the classrooms they are being transferred to have finally settled into patterns with long-term subs who have built relationships with the community and many of whom are working towards becoming fully credentialed. In fact, principals were given the opportunity to tell HR which subs they wanted to protect instead of listing the positions open and knew every substitute was on that list. I ask you to direct staff to seek long-term solutions to keep educators here and work with universities and credentialing programs to bring in new educators. Every student certainly still deserves a credentialed teacher, but mid-year disruptive chaos trying to move 20 people to fill 70 vacancies and then such create different vacancies is not the answer.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Clear and I am a third grade teacher on release at CJ elementary and the organizing chair for UTR. The vacancy crisis will not be solved by taking educators out of their community schools in the middle of the year. These educators are pillars of their communities.
Point of order, Ms. Clear.
Yes.
May I please ask you to move this public comment to open session? It's not on the closed agenda tonight. It should be heard on B8 open session. Thank you.
They want me to keep going, so I'll keep going. These educators are pillars of their communities. Many focus on literacy for multilingual learners and work at Title I schools. They are valued by staff and families and needed at their schools. We're going to continue driving educators and families out of this district if we continue to disrespect these communities with this choice. Over the past three years, over 500 educators have left this district. We need to focus on long-term solutions such as improving our pay and conditions instead of driving talented educators out. Thank you.
Is there anybody here not speaking on reassignments? So the only item for closed session with conference with labor negotiators is SSA. Is anybody here to speak on SSA? Is anybody here to speak on any of the other closed session items, the law suit, or the volunteer positions? Okay, then I'd like to. Seeing no other public comment, please make these comments in open session B8. The board is going to recess to closed session. We'll be back at 6:30. Thank you.
Closed session has been extended to 6:40. Thank you.
Good evening and happy new year. Welcome to the open session of the regularly scheduled January 8th, 2025 meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board. The board is returning from closed session and I am calling open session to order at 6:40 PM. To access translation in Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. If you are here in the auditorium and need translation, you may pick up a headset in the back corner of the auditorium. In a few minutes, we will begin item B8, the public comment item. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Please prepare now for public comment. If you are here in the auditorium and you'd like to make public comment, please fill out and submit a WCC USD public comment card. You can find them on the table in the entryway. And if you are participating via Zoom, please raise your hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of this item on the agenda. If you're participating by phone, press star nine. After your comment card has been turned in, cards are placed in the order received and we call on speakers one at a time, alternating between a public comment here in Dejane and one on Zoom. Public comment generally lasts for one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. In the meantime, we're moving on with the rest of our opening procedures. B2, pledge of allegiance. If you are able or willing, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item B3, land, labor, and body acknowledgement. Land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenay-Marikmaqarcan Alhoni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Labor and body recognition acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of our country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Author Dr. Michelle Rogers-Hart. B4, West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board anti-racism statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, a conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCC USD education. To carry WCC USD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an antiracist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is a respected and valued member of the WCC USD community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting antiracist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living these standards of anti-racism in our schools. Board approved, March 20th, 2024. B5, roll call. Dr. Moses, would you please take role?
Thank you. Trustee Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Hernandez.
Good evening, President.
President Reckler.
Good evening, President.
Clerk Canyana.
Good evening, President.
Student trustee Wilson.
Present.
And student trustee Espinosa.
Present.
The roll call is complete.
Thank you. B6, report ratification of closed session. Dr. Moses, I believe this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. Regarding Agenda Item A2, 8.2.1 Conference with Legal Counsel, the board voted to authorize legal counsel to, one, file a petition writ of certiorari in the Jane Doe AMM versus WCC USD matter in the United States Supreme Court, and take any other actions necessary to perfect, make that filing. And, two, if necessary, exhaust appellate review at all levels, state and federal, in the DH versus WCC USD matter. The vote was unanimous.
Thank you. B7, public apology. This is my item. Before we begin public comment, I want to apologize to Mr. Don Gosny. At the December 18th, 2024 meeting, Mr. Gosny's public comment was disrupted by audience discontent and he left the podium before completing his statement. He also reports that foul language was used and inappropriate remarks were made to him in the meeting space. Such actions are unacceptable. Public comment is meant for civil, respectful dialogue where diverse viewpoints can be made without interruption or intimidation, and it's the chair's job to protect those rights. Unfortunately, I did not ensure Mr. Gosny's rights were protected and I apologize. I am hearing impaired and the acoustics in this room, along with the sound system issues at the December 18th meeting, further impacted my ability to hear and respond appropriately. We must address this incident and use it for positive change. Going forward, the following will be implemented. First, the introduction to public comment is updated to reflect new audience expectations. You'll hear this tonight. Second, if anyone on the dais up here, all of us, senses a disruption, they may call for a point of privilege to address conditions that affect the meeting. Noise, disturbance of the meeting, or the inability to hear all qualify as points of privilege. If a disturbance is noted on the floor, by cabinet or staff, word will be passed to the superintendent who will call for a point of privilege. I'll pause the meeting to address it. To get my attention, it's perfectly acceptable to raise a hand or wave at me or even to lightly touch me. Lastly, we're working to improve the sound and acoustics of these meetings. Dr. Moses, Clerk Canyana, and I met on December 20th, 2024, and we asked that options for improvement be surfaced expeditiously, and we'll bring those forward for discussion with this body soon. So, Mr. Duck Gosny, please accept my sincere apology for this event and I intend to see that it serves as a catalyst for improvement. I request the statement in its entirety be included in this meeting minutes. B8, we're moving on to public comment. Members of the public, I invite you to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. Should additional speakers remain at the conclusion of one hour, public comment may be extended. The time allotted to per speaker beyond the first hour is generally one minute. Individuals wishing to speak, please submit a WCC USD public comment card or, if participating by Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of this item on the agenda. If you are calling in by phone, press star nine. Speaking time shall not be transferred from one person to another, and there is no substitution of speakers. Speakers can also make public comments again for each discussion and action item on the agenda after staff presentations. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. The same protocols recited above apply. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time at the podium as if it was your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. And with that, is there any public comment?
Wes, our first public comment is Mary Luckton. President Reckler, members of the school board. My name is Mary Luckton and I'm currently employed as an instructional support coach and reading coach with the Office of English Learner Multilingual Achievement. This is my 21st year in this district. While you are charged with and elected to make difficult decisions for all of our students, we remind you that you hold an even greater responsibility to protect our most vulnerable students. This includes foster youth, low-income students, and English language learners who alone comprise a third of this district's student body. By voting to reassign district coaches and in particular pooling English learner coaches from their positions, you are directly removing much-needed supports for English learners. Across the district's more than 50 schools, but especially in schools with high concentrations of English learners, EL coaches help build the capacity of administrators and teachers to create assets-based learning environments and provide differentiated, targeted, and equitable EL programming, instruction, and assessment for this incredibly diverse group of students and the overlooked subgroups of students they represent, including almost 2,000 newcomer English learners, 1,600 long-term English learners, 1,200 students in elementary school who are at risk of becoming long-term English learners, and almost 1,500 duly identified students, special ed and English learner. These coaches work in order to improve English learner students' language development and academic achievement, an ultimate goal of reclassification. Thank you. Our next public comment is Tracy. Please unmute yourself.
Yes. Yes. Hi, my name is Tracy LaFrenier. I am a prep teacher within the district. And this is my almost fifth year, sixth year of being reassigned. In the middle of the year, at the beginning of the year, it just seems to keep changing that whenever they don't have enough teachers, oh, well, you're expendable. We're just going to move you and reassign you without the thought of. I have nine teachers that I am supporting, which is over two schools, and now they are not getting their science curriculum because of the reassignment. We are losing prep teachers rapidly and cannot hire new ones because of this continual reassignment that we keep getting every year, getting disruptive. It's not easy to close down a classroom. It's not easy to open up a new classroom, and it is very time-consuming and we don't have enough time to do it. The other thing I just want to say is I was very upset that we had to hear from UTR about the district's decision and that they sent out letters to the community and staff before they even informed us about the reassignment and also too, they did not inform you. So I just want to make it very clear that as I appreciate what they're doing, trying to fill classrooms, there's got to be other ways. And I also think they need to respect us as prep teachers, that we are classroom teachers. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Calvin Walters.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Calvin Walters. I am the math department chair at Richmond High. I also run our WASC accreditation process. I'm a TTL, among other things. And I'm here tonight to talk about the impact that these described changes would have at Richmond specifically. We have been working extremely hard in our math department to make sure we have trained, talented, committed teachers in place. We have two long-term subs who are at risk of being reassigned, and they are people who have been running these classrooms effectively since the beginning of the year. And now you could, apparently, somebody can just randomly pull them out and who knows who's going to go into those classrooms. So this is really going to be a disservice to our students. We have effective classroom teachers. Why are we messing with this? We also have, as Richmond High, we have the single largest Title I budget in the school, in the district. And to take the person who is single-handedly responsible for managing that budget, all of the contracts that go with it, all of the teacher reimbursements that happen, all of our purchasing that happens for us as teachers, the person that really makes our school really run efficiently, she's almost like our chief of staff. We're talking about taking her out of that role. Richmond High is working smoothly as it is. Please do not allow these changes to go through because it will cause damage. And I think one of the roles that you have to take into account is that no harm should be done in these changes. Harm will be done. Thank you.
Next public comment is dark gray parent. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Shelley Wharton. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shelley Wharton. Excuse me. I'm an English teacher at Richmond High, and I'm similarly to my colleagues here in support of our two long-term subs and Ms. Para. They keep our school running, Ms. Para does specifically, and our two math subs, long-term subs are experienced teachers. One is a math major who has passed the NTPA and yesterday received notice from the CTC that she has her preliminary credential. Excuse me, I need water. She emailed HR today, so they just need to check in and get that passed over. So, in, to remove these respected and effective subs from, from their classrooms would be extremely disruptive to hundreds of math students at Richmond High. And as well, I want to talk about Para a lot. She has been one of the most welcoming people on campus at Richmond High. She runs everything. She leads our leadership, well, one of the people who leads our leadership class and many events on campus. She keeps our school running, and we need her. So please do not remove her and reassign her. Yeah, I'll just name some other things that she does since I have some time. She's an on-call support to our campus security team. She works on the budget, as previously mentioned. She purchases supplies, does, she's a coach for new teachers. She supports on study trips and reimbursements. She was previously a math teacher, and so she does on-demand math tutoring when needed. And as I mentioned, just handles many special projects. We cannot afford to lose her. So, please, please do not reassign our two long-term math subs at Richmond High and Ms. Para. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a great evening.
Our next public comment is Kathy Baker.
Members of the board. My name is Kathy Baker. I am a second grade teacher at Perry's Elementary and elementary director for United Teachers of Richmond. As a black woman, whose ancestors this country was built on the backs of, I hold the board personally accountable for upholding anti-racist practices by not attempting to repair the systemic issues of vacancies on the backs of our Black and Brown students. I'm here to support two of our coaches at our site and two of our long-term substitutes, one of them who will be speaking to you in just a moment. But I'm also here speaking on behalf of my twenty students that I had to leave two years ago because this problem occurred back then, and it has not been repaired. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here on behalf of students, families, and educators who have been affected by this decision to, decision to wait until January to address known teacher vacancies. I'm shaking because I'm so nervous and so upset. Known teacher vacancies through involuntary transfers four months into the school year. This delay and the subsequent mid-year restuffling of teachers will disrupt learning environments and strain relationships that are critical to student success. Imagine being a student who has finally built trust and rapport with a substitute after weeks of instability, only to have them suddenly replaced. The bonds of trust between students and educators are not simply transactional. They are built through consistency, empathy, and time. Research shows that strong teacher-student relationships are foundational to academic success.
Please conclude your comment. Our next public comment is Shanae Von. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, school board members. On behalf of Teamsters Local A five six, we would like to extend a warm welcome to each of you as you step into your new roles on the WCC USD school board. We are excited to begin this journey of collaboration, mutual respect, and share a commitment to the betterment of our students, staff, and community. As your, as the Teamsters representatives, we firmly believe that working together with the school board is a key creating a positive, effective, and supportive learning environment. We recognize that you have been entrusted with a great responsibility and will like to, and will like forward to partnering, and looking forward to partnering with you to assure that our schools continue to thrive. We, we know that the work ahead will require thoughtful decisions, careful consideration, and collective dedication to our students and staff. We are confident that together we will create a, a school environment where all students, staff, and families will feel valued. Again, congratulations on your new positions, and thank you for your service to the district. We are looking forward to building a productive and positive relationship with you. Hopefully, the school board will update their website, so I will be able to invite you to have a meet and greet with Teamsters Local A five six and the, and our representatives, which is Miguel, Veronica, and Edward, and myself, Shanae Von. Thank you and have a good day. Good evening.
Our next public comment is Bronwyn Evans.
Good evening. My name is Bronwyn Evans. I'm a second grade teacher and one of the UTR union representatives at Murphy Elementary School. This year, I'm participating in a grant-funded literacy lessons program run by Benjamin Lay. Through the program, we locate struggling readers, many of whom are English language learners, to provide them with tutoring and intervention support every day for an hour and a half each day. The positive impact that this has had on our scholars, our families, our educators, our communities at our school and schools across the district is monumental. The impact that this has had on my own teaching practices as a fourth-year teacher is immeasurable. Benjamin Lay is one of many individuals who are being ousted from their current roles to fill these vacancies, to fill vacant positions, many of which have been open and vacant from the beginning of the school year with literacy coaches, with specialists, and anyone with a credential is irresponsible and misguided. I urge you to consider putting our students, families, educators, and communities first. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lisa Khan. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Louis Chacon. I'm calling this evening really wearing multiple hats for different roles I play. I'm a community member. I'm a Richmond High alumni, class of two thousand and six. I have kids in this district. I'm currently assistant principal at Richmond High, taught at Richmond High. I have family and friends who choose to send their, their students to Richmond High School. So it's just a lot of different responsibilities that come from being connected to Richmond High and being connected in the community. And just the changes that are being considered is really demoralizing, to, to put it lightly, especially at this point in the year. To consider taking teachers out of our classrooms, to consider removing somebody like Ms. Elizabeth Adiego, AKA Para, from her position, really the, the heart of our school, what holds our school together. And I get emotional just thinking about it, not just because of the human beings that will be affected, the adults, I mean, but the students. We talk about this district being anti-racist. And just need I remind you that any financial decisions, any budget documents, they are moral documents. So we are making a choice to, in the middle of the school year, remove individuals that our students have learned to trust, that adults around them have learned to trust, individuals who give it their all every day. Talking about the Special Olympics at Ms. Para, she was here at seven in the morning to help out, put up signs, while then she has to go and do her usual job on top of the other jobs that she just takes on and just helps keep everything moving. I really hope you, you look at this decision closely and really think about the impact, the real-life impact this is going to have on our community and really prove yourselves to truly be an anti-racist district. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Valerie Swenson.
Good evening, board members. My name is Valerie Swenson, and I am a long-term sub at Perry's Elementary. I am a fully credentialed teacher. I have a master's degree. I taught for thirty-seven years. I taught in New Jersey, and then I moved to California, and I taught in the Fontana Unified School District for seventeen years. I taught in Nevada for twelve years before I retired in twenty thirteen. And I have never worked in a district that was so insensitive toward their teachers and their children so as to implement the removal of teachers from classrooms after almost one hundred days. One hundred days of growing to know these children. One hundred days of building relationships, community, family, and love. And it's just wrong.
Our next public comment is iPhone. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Jessica. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jessica Herbert. I am a parent in the district. I also graduated from the district in two thousand and four. I'm coming to you tonight to ask that you reconsider budget cuts to the IB program, specifically the program at Pinole Valley High School. My daughter is a senior in the IB program, and she has been learning and growing tremendously throughout the last two years. And over half of the juniors and seniors at Pinole Valley High School are enrolled in the IB program. The program is valuable to students because it allows them to engage in higher levels of learning and to learn from a more global perspective. And it prepares them for college. It prepares them for the rigor of college courses. And they have the opportunity to graduate with thirty credits, thirty college credits that are accepted by most colleges and universities. I'm looking forward to my sophomore participating in the program next year. He has been without a permanent English language teacher for the last two years of high school. So I'm looking forward to him being able to receive some language instruction next year. Again, I am just coming as a parent and a fellow alumni tonight and ask that you reconsider cuts to the IB program. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Corey Johnson. Corey Johnson. Next public comment is Elizabeth Para Adiego.
Good evening. I am Elizabeth Adiego, also known as Para. I am a PA at Richmond High and at Deansah High School. When I was growing up, my father said to me, whatever your job you do, do it well. That is what I believe I do, and that is what I believe everyone speaking on my behalf tonight will tell you. If you assign me back to the classroom, I will do my best to teach one hundred and eighty students. But if you leave me where I am, I have the privilege of enhancing the high school experience of twenty-three hundred students, one hundred and sixty staff, and seven admin that I support and interact with daily. I do all the procurement for both Richmond and Deansah. I handle all the community engagement, uploads and tracking. I handle SSC agendas, minutes, budgets, and contracts. I manage SPSA monitoring and support budget planning, along with supporting all the other departments on campus. I understand the needs of those vacancies. But filling those holes will leave a vacancy that will not be filled. I was one of forty adults being reassigned, but that number is now one out of fifteen. How were us fifteen deemed as not important enough to stay where we are? The jobs that we do enhance student experiences and cannot be just seen on a PCN report. My job is paid one hundred percent out of SSC site funds at both sites. Members of the SSC voted unanimously to have me continue to support what I do at both Richmond and Deansah. At a minimum, let me finish the commitments to the students, the staff, the admin, the contractors, and the communities that I have started this year. I ask you not to send me away from my PA position at both Richmond High and Deansah, and let me finish the year. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rita Sabalos. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. I'm Rita, and I'm a mom for sophomore in Pinole Valley High. And I would like you to please consider not taking away the IB program. I got a, my daughter got a transfer for this school exclusively for, for the IB. And I would love to, for her and the rest of the students to get a chance to complete the program. It is just two schools in the whole, you know, in the whole, the cities that are nearby. It's just Berkeley High, and that's, they have almost four thousand students that I appreciate about Pinole Valley High, that there are less students, and the school is really good and mostly about the IB program. So please consider, don't take it away.
Our next public comment is Alejandra Barra.
Good evening, board members. My name is Alejandra Barra, a teacher at Richmond High School. I am here to express my frustration regarding the decision to reassign Elizabeth Adiego, or how we know her at Richmond High School, Ms. Para. As a dedicated educator and colleague, I can confidently say that this decision to is incredibly unfair and in a disservice to both the staff and students at Richmond High School. In her current position, Ms. Para serves approximately seventy staff and a thousand two hundred students. May I say this is only at Richmond High School. If we move her to a classroom, she will only serve a hundred and eighty students, which to me, that would be a significant loss. She will, she has proven herself to be an essential resource and it is hard to imagine how this decision could possibly benefit anyone involved. Additionally, Ms. Para has been an outstanding co-teacher for leadership at Richmond High School. Her work in this area has contributed to the success and growth of our students and removing her from this position would break something that is absolutely not broken. She has cultivated a positive, productive environment that is integral to the development of our student leaders and disrupting this dynamic would only harm the school's overall progress. I urge you all to reconsider this decision and take into account the immeasurable value Ms. Para brings to our school. Her contribution goes far beyond the classroom and her current role is crucial, crucial, excuse me, to the wellbeing of both students and staff. Our district always talks about equality and right now, that's not what it is. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rodney Alamo Brown. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'd like to say good evening, board. This is Rodney Alamo Brown, a community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. There's an old saying, when I is replaced with we, even illness becomes wellness. I echo the same sentiments of everyone who has spoken before me. And I want to put this in you all lap. Imagine children who will have to go through this severe situation, not seeing the teacher whom they seen when school began in August. Here we are, five months until the school year and transition begins to happen. I want you to think about the psychological approach that these children will have. I want you to also think about the climate in which these students are at, at these particular schools. I was visiting King, Grant and Deansah High School respectively this past week and I've noticed the morale of certain teachers who are in this particular position. I didn't speak with anyone, but I knew exactly what it was. I'm urging each one of you that are on the Board of Trustees to make a significant, significant choice this evening and think about the children. Think about the large impact, the looming impact. And I also want you to consider the families of these children. Think about it. Make sure that you make a conscious choice tonight because again, your legacy hangs in the balance. I'd like to say good evening, everyone. Have a blessed night. Shalom.
Our next public speaker is Irida Santian.
Good evening, board. This is Irida Santian, literacy coach at Grant. I am here to express my deep concern regarding the reassignment of myself and Ben, who runs the literacy program. As a classroom teacher and now literacy coach at Grant, I have seen firsthand the transformative impact this program has had on both students and staff. The girls I have witnessed in our students, both academically and socially, is something that cannot be easily replicated. Brad Elementary serves the largest number of ELs and newcomers in our district. There's a total enrollment of five hundred and fifty-five students. Many of the students face significant barriers to academic success. And the support you provided by this literacy program is crucial in helping them overcome those challenges. The program has provided a consistent, targeted support that has allowed our students to improve their literacy skills at an incredible rate. Every week, we've seen students advance in their reading levels, become more competent learners and develop stronger communication skills. There, these are not just academic gains, they're milestones in competence, identity and belonging. As part of the staffing solution, I will be taking over a classroom where the teacher is a credential student. This adds additional pressure to an already signed situation as we work to ensure the best possible learning experience for our students. While I am committed to supporting my colleagues and the students, the loss of this program would be great for our challenges for us as we balance our responsibilities and intermediate academic, academic needs of all our students and especially our ELs and newcomers. The proposed solution to address the staffing challenges through cuts to this vital program is definitely concerning while we understand the need to address the staffing challenges. I urge you to consider the long-term consequences and think of other solutions. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Mark. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, President Reckler, Clerk Canana, Trustee Hernandez Gonzalez Hoi and Trustee Smith Folds, Mark Mitchell, Executive Director of United Teachers of Richmond. I just want to point out to the board, because I don't believe you know what's happened in this regard exactly. The day that Dr. Hurst left the building, within twelve hours, we were informed of the unilateral decision of the district staff to involuntarily transfer about forty educators from their positions. Many of these same educators had already been involuntarily transferred at the beginning of the school year in August and September and had just recently returned to their permanent positions just a few weeks earlier. We were, we asked immediately, what is the contractual or legal basis for this decision? We were told unequivocally by district administrators, ED Code three-five-zero-three-five subsection E. We looked at that section. It said that these transfers could be made only with approval of the Board of Education. We assumed that this matter would be on the board agenda for your last meeting in December when it was not and it was not discussed. We asked board members, did you know about this? Have you heard about this? And we learned that no, the district staff had not informed the board at all of this drastic move destabilizing our schools, destabilizing the education of hundreds, if not thousands of students. Please follow the law. Please make sure that any kind of move like this is voted on by you with all the information. You need to make a good decision and please do what your district administrators are not doing and put students first. Let's stabilize the educational experience of our students and make West Contra Costa a destination district for our region's most talented educators. Let's not run them off like we've been doing year after year. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Benjamin Lay.
Benjamin Lay and it's been my honor to lead the Language and Literacy Lessons Institute in this district for the past few years. You should have some information on the program as well as a petition with comments and testimonials from teachers, parents and community members. At its core, this program is about equity. It accelerates the progress of multilingual learners, many from Title I schools, helping to close the opportunity gap in reading, writing and language. But literacy lessons is more than just academic growth. It transforms lives. One student I worked with was barely speaking when he entered the program. By the end of twenty weeks, he marched into the principal's office and read aloud a book he'd written about hippos in front of five adults, including the principal and vice principal. He left the program not only reading and writing at grade level, but also confident, engaged and ready to lead his own learning. He was in first grade. This is what we mean by equity. It's not just about scores. It's about giving students who've been shut out of education the tools to their own identities as scholars and lifelong learners. This program also builds teacher expertise. Educators aren't just teaching literacy. They're learning how to foster critical thinking, student-driven learning and deep engagement across all subjects. These shifts are what will truly lead to equity for all students. For me, this work is a calling. I took this job because I was called to create change in education for students beyond just my own classroom. I could make a difference for the twenty-one students in the classroom to which I'm intended to be reassigned, but the impact of this program reaches far beyond twenty-one students. It touches the seventy-four students receiving tutoring, four hundred and seventy-five students in classrooms across the district and the twenty-one teachers I'm training who will shape the future for hundreds more. I ask you to support the Language and Literacy Lessons Institute so that we can continue moving West Contra Costa closer to its goal of equity for multilingual students. Each of you has-
Our next public comment is Erica. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening. I wanted to thank everybody for speaking out tonight and thank you to the interim superintendent and distinguished board members. I am a parent and former educator, literacy advocate and so much more. This evening, I am here to express my deep concern in the decision to take away Grant Elementary's literacy coach. Shout out to Ms. Santian. And all these disruptive changes to our schools across the district. Grant Elementary is currently at over five hundred and fifty students. Yes, you heard me. That's five hundred and fifty students. Has a DL program, DLI program and the highest number of English learners and newcomer students of this district. Taking away our literacy coach will disrupt the progress of our Latino and African-American students. It will disrupt the essential and positive team that works endlessly to make students' learning journey a successful journey. My children and many others are happy and thriving at Grant Elementary. Please do not disrupt the success. Please do not make a struggle further. Please find another solution. Thank you so much for your time and dedication. Good evening. I am complete.
Our next public comment is Kate Gilksman.
Good evening, board. My name is Kate Gilksman. I'm a teacher on special assignment in the literacy department, here to speak on the subject of involuntary transfers. If I am reassigned, the literacy department of West Contra Costa Unified School District will be reduced to a staff of one. My role has been to coordinate and facilitate literacy professional development and coaching for transitional kindergarten through twelfth-grade teachers across all of our schools. This work will be greatly effective. This department is reduced to one person. I respectfully thank you for your consideration and your time.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. How are you this evening? I have a couple of comments I would like to talk about. The Richmond High, Ms. Para, Ms. Para, Elizabeth, oh my God, you guys have to keep her. She always engaged with the African-American parents in making sure that APAC was involved in our rebuild and everything that was done there. She made sure equity was at Richmond High. This would be a huge disservice for her to not be able to be there. You guys cannot do this in peace. This will not happen in peace. I will be having a child go back to Richmond High and this is not what I'm looking for. This district has made great gains with Richmond High, including all their students. And for her to leave, I, we will be going backwards. So please do not do what you gotta do so she's not removed. And with Stige, I, I really hope that you all put Stige as a standing report on the board agenda, on the rebuild, to make sure that the community and parents are aware of what's going on at all times and this does not get pushed to the back of the line as it has in the past. So please make sure that we do some respectful things to ensure that we have updates on Stige. And the IB program at Penole, I love it. I appreciate it, but not taking it from our most needed students. Please find another way to fund the IB program because what I've seen, it was coming out of our LCAP funding and that is not fair for our most needed students to have that funding come out when the students that participate in IB are not mostly qualified for that services. So please find another way to fund that very valuable program and it's much needed in our district because like the last speaker said, that we don't have. We're a unique district with that program. So that's all for this evening and I'm complete. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Arisha Green.
Good evening, members of the board. I am a teacher at Richmond High School and I would like to first remind you all that it's not just your job to make sure that operations happen successfully now, but also to create a platform that safeguards the future of our district and impacts the future and you know, how things go for our students. At Richmond High, we have such a large population. We have a ton of fantastic programs and it takes a lot of effort to keep all of those pieces running smoothly, collaborating with each other, navigating around each other. It's not, it's an effort that involves our teachers, our long-term subs, the SCOWs, which we've recently lost. We have long-term subs who are going to be impacted by these reassignments potentially. Our long-term subs, they didn't come in acting like subs. They came in, they have fostered relationships with our students. They care about the quality of service that they offer and their names come up. When we, when I hear my students talking about which teachers they trust, which teachers impact them, they refer to our long-term subs. At Richmond High, we have an internationals academy. Those students come from a variety of backgrounds and circumstances as do students not in the internationals academy. And I love to watch when a new student comes in, they kind of rally around them and they tell them, oh, this teacher will help you with this. This is the cool person. This is who you go to for this and that. And people who are on this reassignment list, the teachers who are impacting our students. But lastly, Ms. Para, she keeps our school running. It is a challenge to figure out who to go to within the district when we have to collaborate with different departments. She knows, she is effective and she is not selective in who she helps. She gets things done. We need that. Please reconsider this. This would be a disservice to our students. We start-
Our next public comment is Don Gosley.
I'm grateful for the President Reckler's acknowledgement and words of remorse for the angry and hateful actions taken against me when I tried to speak at the board meeting of December eighteenth. I'm also appreciative of the comments emailed to me by Trustee Smith Folds. Sadly, almost as soon as the agenda was posted with President Reckler's comments, comments from members of the public started appearing, claiming that this was just another white person standing up for another white person. Once again, the district allowed things to become racist. For those that may not have seen what happened or could understand what was being said either by the Zoom video or live and in person, after proclaiming my support for more than fifteen years for a total rebuild of Siege Elementary, I tried to suggest that while the district was shut down for the holidays, that the board hold off on voting on a plan for three weeks while the bond oversight committee, the meeting, the two brand spanking new trustees and the public might have an opportunity to review this brand-new data and controversial plan, speak amongst themselves and deliberate with the Board of Trust to swear, who were sworn to represent all two hundred and sixty-eight thousand residents of West County. Within four seconds of me starting to speak on this idea, the crowd behind me vehemently booed me, used vile vulgarities, calling me a racist with suggestions of carnal activities I had with my mother and actually threatening me. I no longer felt safe here in this room. After I packed up my gear and tried to leave the building, two from this crowd followed me outside, cursing me some more, calling me a racist and threatening me. Keep in mind that we had one district employee several months back that at one of these private public meetings, tell the crowd that he wasn't afraid of me. He could whip my behind, except he used a more vulgar term for it. And all the while, while this is happening, no one from the board, staff or security did anything to put a stop to this or protect me. Just a few moments ago, we all heard you proudly boast of the district's anti-racism policies. How can we expect these hollow words to make a difference on our campuses when here in your own house, no one was willing to step forward to make a difference that night? As the saying goes, you can talk the talk, but can you walk the walk? And we still have the questions left unanswered about exact-
Our next public comment is Ralph Bedwell. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Kenny Moore.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Board. My name is Kenny Moore. I am the community schools director at Richmond High School. I just wanted to request, to all express my frustration about the reassignments. Obviously, everybody's working hard at their sites to create an ideal environment for our students to thrive in. I know strategizing becomes really tricky. However, in this situation, it kind of feels like a little bit of Robin Peter to pay Paul. I know we're trying to fill in other holes, but we're also creating major voids at the same time. And we have long-term subs that have, like has already been mentioned, significant relationships and significant impacts, not only on the students, but the rest of the community, but also speaking up for Ms. Elizabeth Adiego, aka Ms. Parra. And specifically from the community schools perspective, I know you all multiple times have already heard a long list about the way she's supporting Richmond High, but she's also been really essential in our community schools efforts. Everything from supporting with our collaborative leadership teams, recruiting, facilitating, participating on different teams, helping us organize. She's been a major part of supporting and resourcing our parent and family engagement events. You all know at the high school level how little parents can be involved at times. But I just really want to implore you all to reconsider your strategy. We don't want to create a bigger void by addressing other voids. You know, the people that we have on campus, we've become community together. We work really hard together. And this is a removal that would have significant ripple effects. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Calvin Miles.
Not so tall here. Good evening, board members, district administrators. My name is Calvin Miles. I'm a teacher at Deanser High School. I'm a parent. I'm a district graduate. And with respect to the challenging task the district has in addressing teacher vacancies, I would like to offer that move to reassign Ms. Parra was obviously not exactly the result of research and thoughtful deliberation. As you can tell by the contingent behind me, the impact Ms. Parra has on both Richmond High and Deanser is phenomenal and impressive. Along with what you've heard about her contributions to Richmond High School, Ms. Parra has also contributed greatly to Deanser, particularly with regards to fiscal stability, administrative guidance, school community and climate, student support, and professional mentorship. I'm one of the representatives of the student, I mean, the school site council, SEC, and we have unanimously agreed to approve funding for her position. And I'll tell you, now I heard that from someone else over there, that she doesn't come cheap. But she was through all that and then some. This should serve as a testament to determination as a site council, that such an investment would be essential to the continued outstanding outcomes that she's provided for us at Deanser. Now, I'm sure there are others who have been negatively affected by this process, and I hope you can find a better way to address this issue. But as far as this particular instance, but as far as moving Ms. Parra away from Richmond High School...
Our next public comment is Rich Seber.
Just a little taller. Good evening, board members, interim superintendent. My name is Rich Seber. I'm an instructional coach with English learner multilingual achievement. For the second time in a year, I stand here asking you to reverse the actions of district management in their decisions to eliminate supports for our most vulnerable students in our highest need schools. If the decision to reassign some of the most knowledgeable and valued professionals to classrooms is approved, it would disproportionately affect the schools with the highest concentrations of at-risk students, including students of color, in fact, predominantly so. How do you reconcile this with the district's anti-racist stance? How do you reconcile this with your commitment to equity? How can you reconcile this with your commitment to student achievement in literacy, mathematics, and language development? How does this decision demonstrate leadership and vision? You know this isn't a solution to the teacher shortage. It's already been exposed for the flaws in its execution. The list of reassignments has already been reduced to such an extent that it will have almost no impact on teacher staffing, but it will have a detrimental impact on teacher support, school functioning, and student learning. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Anape Micaio. Next public comment is Jenny Ernst.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jenny Ernst. I am a math coach at Perry's Elementary, along with Kelly Phimbis, who was an ELA coach there as well. I have a lot of respect for what you do as board members, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for all of us educators, your educators too. We're all in the same boat. We all care for students. We all love students. That's why we're here. I was hired two months ago. Two months ago, I answered an ad in EdJoin for a math intervention coach. This is exactly what I'd been trained to do. I was a classroom teacher for 26 years. I've been a curriculum coordinator. This is exactly where I wanted to land. Two months later, I get a notice about reassignment. And so my worry, and possibly a worry as board members, is what this message sends kind of out there in terms of wanting to work at this district. Just that I went in, I onboarded, I'm excited, and now I don't really know where things are going. I just wanted to give that perspective as well. So that's about it for my perspective. And I just, again, I really appreciate what we're all doing here, and I do want us to be careful of the reputation of this great district. Thanks.
Our next public comment is Jessica Vasquez.
My name is Jessica Vasquez. I'm a teach at Ford Title One School. I've been teaching in the district for 21-plus years, and I'm one of the literacy lesson graduates from last year's cohort. The professional development that I've received through the program is some of the most valuable training I've ever had. It's made me a better teacher for all of my students, not just the ones I've tutored. This reassignment disaster that might affect Ben Lay or TSA, who's not even paid with district funds, this might leak our intervention program, a very invaluable intervention program, likely will discontinue it, very likely, which we don't want to happen. We don't have enough intervention as it is. Please practice what you preach and help us increase equity by offering much-needed intervention to our students. Please do not return the money to the state that was supposed to be allocated towards supporting EL students. This reassignment disaster is no way to retain quality teachers. It's disrespectful to our hard-working, loyal district educators. Thank you.
Next public comment is Andrew Rookie.
How's it going? I'm gonna try and keep this as focused as I can about Parra, because I could talk to you guys about a lot of stuff. Many of you know, I teach at Richmond High School. I run the music department. I built the music department there from nothing. And it couldn't have happened without Parra, because to navigate the systems and the barriers that are put in place by district staff at almost every single turn, I can't do it, bro, because I gotta teach kids. So while you're in office, air-conditioned, doing whatever you're doing, that's the person who makes it happen for the kids. And I know that's... I hate to seem disrespectful to you. I do. But when I get calls two days before an event from this district that you must have had on a calendar, be like, can you please play this after two nights of 14-hour days providing concerts for hundreds of children in Richmond and San Pablo, then I then have to go listen to our then superintendent talk about anti-racism when they take our community outreach workers away from a school that's 40% English learners? You call them and talk to their parents and explain the complexities of what's going on. We are burdened with the task of bringing these families into our country, and I don't think you fully understand the weight of that. We can't do it without people like Parra. We're having a hard day, which is a lot, because it is, and they all know, because I'm very vocal, and so is Parra, but Parra has a little bit of tact, and she knows how to navigate the systems. I can't do what I do without Parra. I cried when I found out Parra was getting taken away from us. And I get that you guys gotta do whatever, but there are other solutions. Stop coming up here talking about being anti-racist. You got rid of the Internationals Academy for the kids who just got to the country. You take away school community outreach workers. You just pull adults from our campus. Is it getting unsafe?
Our next public comment is Lawrence Matty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just interrupt for a point of order? We're at the one-hour mark. How many comments approximately are remaining? Seventeen comments remaining. Board, I would like to recommend that we continue with the next 17 comments at one minute apiece. Do I have, yes, trustee Smith Foles? Extend public comment. Did you say yes? Okay. Trustee Indiana.
How many speakers do we still have? Seven.
Okay. Trustee Hernandez, yes. Trustee Espinoza Jr., trustee Wilson. Okay, yes, we'll continue with one minute on the clock. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lawrence Matty.
Lawrence Matty, I'm a multi-subject science teacher at Richmond High. And as a scientist, if you want to find out how something works, you take out the pieces that are working until it breaks, and that's what you're doing. And you gotta stop, because why would you want schools to grind to a halt when we've got it working, we've got math teachers who are teaching their students when they haven't had math teachers for years, and bringing them back up to grade level, giving them the skills that they need after school? We've got Parra, who's running this school, behind the scenes, but everybody knows she's doing it because she's in everybody's pot. Everybody is benefited by Ms. Parra, and our students are greatly benefited by our SCOWs and our teachers that are here, even if they're long-term subs. We're making it work for the students, and you're trying to figure out what's making this school work by taking it away from us and breaking it. You gotta stop.
Our next public comment is Asani Royal.
Asani Royal, I am a student at Deanser High School. I feel like if you guys been knew, which we all know, everybody's saying behind me, been knew, y'all knew about budget, because since COVID, how are y'all all of a sudden now, oh, well, we don't have teachers, so now we want to put them in other places? Why? For what? For instance, last year, I didn't have a Mandarin teacher, and now y'all want to all of a sudden put these teachers in different places? These kids, us as kids have built relationships with these people, and y'all are wrong, and y'all know the charge do wrong. For instance, Ms. Parra, she's been there to help me for any question that I need or any concern. Are y'all gonna come down there to my school and come help me? No, y'all not. Y'all don't care about nobody but yourself. When y'all here for the dollar, and we know that. If these people behind me leave, we're all going down with, says students, just go out with them, and y'all gonna be mad. Y'all not gonna have no schools, no funding, no money, and y'all gonna wonder why we leaving. This is the thing that we talk about. Y'all don't give us a fair opportunity, and this is the problem. You gave us one minute. That's not fair.
Our next public comment is Sam Taylor.
Hello, I'm Sam Taylor. I've worked at Richmond High School for about nine years now. You've all heard about how important Parra is to our school, so I won't belabor that point. However, in that someone made a comment that she didn't come cheap, I would argue that paying one person to do the job of five people is an excellent fiscal decision. I would urge you to consider how damaging this poorly considered and poorly communicated plan is not only to the Richmond community, but in the future hiring needs of the district. In order to make public schools more attractive to potential teachers, it is important that they can trust decision-makers at the district level to communicate with them, to respect them, and to not jerk them around. I cannot currently in good conscience recommend that my friends apply to work here, which is deeply frustrating, because I am proud of my school, and I am proud of the work that we do. It's really only work so the community can know if to support each other when we need each other. Teachers are required to be endlessly resilient, but resilience is not infinite. Resilience requires support.
Our next public comment is Hadassah Demello.
Good evening. Here we meet again. As y'all may know, my name is Hadassah Demello. I am ASB senior class president and president of the climate team at Deanser High School. I am here on the behalf of Elizabeth Adiego, as we know her as Ms. Parra. I am here to discuss the decision to cut someone from their position within just one day raises serious concerns about fairness, transparency, and the evaluation process. While supporting clubs, managing resources is essential. It seems only one person is equipped to make budget cuts, leaving room for questions about oversight and accountability. Who is making these evaluations, and how are they determining which individuals out of a group of 40 are fulfilling their roles effectively? For instance, Ms. Parra should be evaluated to understand the true scope of her contributions. More than budget cuts are being implemented. Responsibilities are being stripped mid-year without clear communication or input from those affected. Why are these decisions, why are the decisions that disrupt staff and operations? Why are these decisions, why are the decisions that disrupt staff and operations?
Our next public communist Jasari Youngston.
Jasari Youngston, a senior at Deansa High School, and I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Para. Help, we need help. Our school needs help. Ms. Para has truly been a blessing to Deansa High School's Black Student Union ever since I formally met her as our club's vice president this school year. She goes above and beyond to ensure my club is taken care of and has the proper resources we need to be effective on our school campus. She attends our school two times out of each week, but the progress she helps us make is as though she never skips a beat. She is truly incredible. When I hear somebody talking about a role, we're talking about an amazing woman who is loved at our school, and not only that, but who plays a vital role here. You may think you get it, but I don't know if you do. We're not the only school, but Deansa cannot take another year of inconsistency or unexpected changes. I've been here before, unfortunately advocating for the misconstrued idea that the impactful staff members within our institution can be replaced or moved around as pieces in a chess game, but no one's realizing the damage caused by the pieces you're knocking down in the midst of it. Students and lives are in your hands. Schools and education are in your hands. Stability and growth are your discretion.
Next public common is Alondra Herrera Perez.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Alondra Herrera Perez, student body president at Richmond High School, and I am here to express my deep concern about the reassignment of Ms. Elizabeth Adiego Para. Ms. Para is not just a teacher. She is the heart of Richmond High School. Her positivity and dedication inspires every student to grow, believe in themselves, and take on leadership roles. Personally, she has guided me through A P calculus and college applications, offering support that goes beyond academics. Her mentorship shaped me into a more confident and resilient individual. To lose Ms. Para would be a great loss to Richmond High. I urge you to reconsider her reassignment. Her continued presence is essential for the success and growth of my peers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next public communist Cantica Sassano.
Good evening. My name is Cantica Sassano. I'm a fourth year math teacher at Richmond High and U T R Area Two Director. I have been teaching full-time for years under emergency and long-term substitute certifications. I graduated and joined West Contra Costa in fall two thousand twenty-one and stayed loyal despite the consequences the vacancy crisis impacted on me as a Richmond community member and a quote-unquote vacant teacher. Reassignment is a decision that disrespects the work that I and many qualified educators do. It does not prioritize teacher retention, stability at our schools, and instead creates harm by pushing valuable community members away.
Our next public common is Leslie.
Good evening, esteemed board. Thank you for hearing my comments. My name is Leslie Brand. I'm a science teacher at Richmond High School. I'm here to also implore you to reconsider the detrimental changes that you're trying to put in place, which are extremely short-sighted. And from a teacher's perspective, there's two main things. One is it's just disruptive, which is really counter to the overall goal of filling vacant teacher positions. So it's disruptive to the teachers. As I've heard others say, it's would cause, you know, the decreased reputation for this district, and it decreases the overall support for teachers, which causes burnout. So it, in every way, is counterproductive to the overall, overall goal of retaining teachers. Thank you.
My next public common is Beth Kessler.
Good evening, Beth Kessler, science teacher at Richmond High School. I've been teaching in public schools around the bay for twenty-two years. I chose to come to Richmond High last year, turning down significantly higher pay in other districts because I wanted to work in my community and teach in my community. Para was one of the first people I met at Richmond High, and I knew to my, I just said to myself, like, I wanna work with this woman. You, you just have a sense after a while being an educator, the people that make schools work. And as everyone has said here, I was exhausted coming here tonight, like probably everyone in this room. But when I look at behind me, this is Richmond High. And this is, I feel like I still made the right decision to come and work here. But taking Para out, and then, as many said, the ripple effect of shifting all these other people is absolutely unacceptable. We can't do it. This
Our next public communist Daisy Chacon.
Hello, my name is Daisy Chacon, and I'm the Education Justice Manager at the Rice Center. I'm a product of this district, and most importantly, I'm a parent of a current student at Dover Elementary School. I'm here today cuz I'm concerned about the decision to reassign teachers like Ms. McCarthy, who's been at Dover since I was a student there in the nineties. Teachers like Ms. McCarthy are crucial to the education and social emotional growth of our students. When my son started his educational journey at Dover, he didn't speak any English. Through the support from his teachers and Ms. McCarthy, he has continued to expand both in Spanish and English. Now in second grade, he was recently qualified for reclassification. But this is bigger than my son's educational goals. This is about the district continuing the pattern of responding to problems rather than planning ahead to support their students, teachers, and community, because that's what this is, a response, not a solution. Our students are consistently burdened with the mismanagement of district resources. Our students will not only see this change as losing a teacher, they're losing a member of the community, the adult ally, and a mentor. We keep telling our students that we're moving towards being anti racist.
Our next public communist Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. Student Information Systems Supervisor for the school district. I am also the S S A I A P T E chapter president. I am here actually to, to, two roles really quickly. One, we have a moment coming up on the twenty-first, and I highly encourage everyone to start paying attention to what we have coming in and making sure that you are encouraging our students to come to our school district. Well, in that case, I'm also as the S S A president stating you are taking away student services. One of them is our safety, safety at our school sites. We have cuts coming up on the budget this evening, and that is, I know, not definite yet, but there are still conversations about safety. Safety is something that we all need to really pay attention to, and our students need it. And then I am gonna say, I'm supporting our teachers, and our teachers are back here supporting our students, and to have those students safely in the classroom where they feel secure is very important. Thank you.
Our next public common is Giorgio Cosentino.
Different topic, my apologies. Okay, my name is Giorgio Cosentino. I'm a former Richmond High School biology teacher, current Hercules parent, and I'm employed down the street, the California Department of Public Health, in their state virology laboratory. I was born with A D H D and central auditory processing disorder. My diagnosis was rated as a severe impairment. Mostly, I work in a laboratory where my duties are in writing. I have the difficulties following instructions, verbal instructions. My employer is not suited right now. They're, they're struggling to figure out how to help folks who are on the neurodiversity spectrum, those who have A D H D and related disorders and disabilities. So they, my employer wants to do better in this area, and so we're working together to start making something happen. I said, well, we need to get some input from folks right down the street, right here in Richmond. I wanna hear, we wanna hear from the students and parents.
Point of order, I'm sorry. So his time, I think, cut out the mic.
Can I get a few seconds again? Just repeat that.
Five seconds back on, please.
We ready? Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back. I'm gonna reach out to folks, and you're, I don't want the, the students here who, and parents to help build, put in place at the employer down the street at the laboratory. You guys can be part of making an environment that's very inclusive to, to, to all of us folks who are, who struggle. Thank you.
Our next public communist Karen Larson.
Hello, I'm Karen Larson. I'm a parent educator at Richmond High. I've been there since two thousand eighteen. I'm also speaking in support of Ms. Para. She supports both students and staff, staff with things like budgets and money, and, and she acts as coaches for new teachers, but probably more importantly is with the students. In the leadership class, she empowers students to create the events and activities that make their time in high school memorable, things like rallies, spirit weeks, and dances. She supports both students and teachers by providing on-demand math tutoring. Her, one of the overriding qualities she brings is her positivity and desire to build community. Not only is she on the climate committee, but she's also on the Richmond High Sunshine Committee, which celebrates our Richmond High family, raises morale, and helps us build connections. She, if she is involuntarily transferred, she may bump a teacher who's close to having full certification and who's already built strong relationships with our students. Please do not transfer her. She's a critical person in a critical position.
Our next public communist Kelly Carey.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Carey, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Perry's K eight school. I am speaking to express my concerns regarding the recent decision to reassign credentialed staff back into the classroom. In the communication sent on December eleventh, it was stated that this decision was made after exhausting all available options. However, the specifics of those options have not been transparent. Can you please share with the public what steps have been taken to address this issue? Two years ago, when there were numerous vacancies, central office employees stepped in to fill these teaching positions. Perhaps a solution can be revisited to ensure every student is taught by a highly qualified, certificated teacher. Additionally, having noticed that many of these reassignments are taking staff away from our most underserved schools. This raises concerns about equity and the persistent challenges faced by these communities. Can you please address why these schools continue to bear the brunt of such decisions? I strongly urge you to engage in further discussions to implore all possible solutions that will allow these much-needed educators to remain in their current position.
Our next public common is Diego Garcia.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Diego Garcia. I'm here as a teacher and also athletic director of Richmond High School. I had a twenty-five minute speech, reduced to two minutes, and now one minute. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna be silenced for a few seconds because I'm here in support of Elizabeth Adiego, AKA known as Ms. Para, and two other substitute teachers. Because I want you guys to know how it would feel like if we didn't have her there. Everyone already spoke, and I don't wanna seem redundant, so let's just have a moment of silence. Again, having all these people supporting Ms. Para is what common practice is. You as a public servant, we ask you to do what is common sense. Thank you.
Our next public common is Carla Galvez Lima.
Good evening, board members. I came tonight to highlight this evening that I stand in disagreement with any actions that involve the removal, reassignment of literacy coaches from schools and perhaps the termination of I B dual language immersion programs that will set the foundation for my children to be able to attain a seat and graduate from U C and Cal State schools. Why, you might ask. You see, I am a U C Berkeley student graduate, a Cal San Francisco State University graduate, who was originally an English learner in an underserved public school system in Los Angeles. I would later be bused to more affluent K through twelve schools with literacy coaches, honor courses, and over twenty-five advanced placement courses in order to earn a seat at these elite schools who have high expectations for their students in terms of literacy foundations and international world schooling to set, to be able to read, analyze, and apply the caliber of academic material that these colleges and universities demand of their students. I struggled while working and facing health challenges, but I obtained two degrees only because
And our last public common is Paul Scattonen. Paul Scattonen. Scott Olney. That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who gave public comment tonight. We are now moving on to B nine standing reports. I believe we have reports from United Teachers of Richmond here in person, and we have A S A T online.
President Smith Folds, I mean, I'm so sorry, President Reckler, I apologize for that. I always have it. I was wondering if we could take a five-minute recess.
Did you say recess?
Yes, if we could take a five-minute recess.
Okay. I'm good with that. Let's put, eight twenty-three is the start time. Thank you.
The educational stability that is essential for student success. Literacy coaches, E L D specialists, and other non-classroom educators play a vital role in supporting our most vulnerable students and new educators learning our craft. Removing them mid-year creates unnecessary setbacks for students who rely on these relationships and supports to thrive. Across the district, the reassignments risk doing, undoing years of hard work and progress. They do not address the root causes of our staffing challenges and instead create new problems for They do not address the root causes of our staffing challenges and instead create new problems for students in school communities. Education Code 35035 subsection E explicitly requires board approval for reassignments. It is a responsibility to ensure that these decisions are made not in arbitrary or capricious reasons and that they serve the best interests of students. The district's current actions bypass this requirement, undermining transparency and accountability that our community deserves. We urge the board to place the proposed reassignments on the agenda for a formal discussion and vote to fulfill your statutory duty. Reject short-term fixes like mid-year reassignments that harm students and instead invest in sustainable solutions such as competitive salaries, robust recruitment efforts, and professional development support. Let's work to stabilize our schools for the long term. Stability is the cornerstone of effective learning environments. Reassignments disrupt the stability, particularly for our most vulnerable students. I urge the board to invest in long-term solutions that ensure consistency and continuity in our classrooms. UTR remains committed to collaboration with the district and the board. We want to work together to create solutions that address staffing challenges without sacrificing the stability and success of our students and communities. I thank you again for your leadership on Resolutions 2425-54 and 2425-46. Your commitment to equity and rebuilding is a foundation that we can all build on. Now, let's extend that commitment by addressing the needs of steed educators and students and ensuring that the proposed reassignments are handled transparently, fairly, and with a focus on what matters most, our students. Thank you.
So, it's ASAT. Mr. Lon Harrison, please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. ASAT has been still dealing with a lot of the same issues and barriers, and we're hoping that this new year, but continuance of this school year with a new board, that we can get some of these issues resolved. One of the main issues is that we no longer have a liaison. Othiri Christian was appointed to us by trustee Foltz when she was the president, and now we don't know if that's still gonna happen. Communicating with the district staff to get information on activities that we have recommended, put on a calendar, and give feedback has been struggles. This is not going to change educational data for Black students when we continue not to set up intentionally ways to engage the parents. We have had the same group of small parents advocating for communication, clear communication with this district so we can communicate with others, and it still seems a challenge to be happening. And we need support from the board to assign us a liaison, another liaison, to work with the district so we can get some forward motion on parent engagement and involvement and give parents a clear pathway how to be involved with their children's academic outcome, changing the negative ones and celebrating the positive ones and also sharing more positive. Our district is doing a lot of good work that is not recognized and Black students don't have access to. We need to work, we want to work with you all so we can change that. We want to work with you all so that our students are looked at like the rest of the students when we want academic success and parent engagement. So we would like for the board to give us a liaison, so to support us with that. And also, we've been having challenges with principals engaging the parents to start. I've had calls for over three school sites where principals have not had their first APAC meeting and are not holding SSC meetings by law. So these are barriers again from Black parents being involved. Black parents want to be APAC leaders and principals are not holding the meetings. I don't know what, what solution we need to come up with, but I thought we had come up with one, but I just feel the board and the cabinet and our Dr. Moses, if you could support principals with looking at how when you especially have parents that want to volunteer their time to organize with, with them and with other parents and they're not getting support from their site principals, so can we get some more support around that? And then, another thing that we're really concerned about is how the data on our children and how the district is as a whole, ensuring that our children, there are programs and services that the parents and the students know about so that we can change and like also show the bright spots on the things that are working. The information is not getting to us clearly. The information is not getting to us in a timely manner for us to engage in the good things that you guys are doing and that you guys are hosting. And then it's not very collaborative, the way things are being planned in our district. A lot of things are being planned without us. And this is another student, this is another big concern of ours, but it's from the student perspective, the use of the N-word on our campus. We read a lot how the equity policy, but I feel what would be good, instead of reading that policy, is giving reports out on how we're making a difference with different committees, with different clubs. Somebody needs to organize intentionally to make a difference about equity in our district and support students who are not saying the N-word, because our children deserve to go to school in a safe, welcoming environment and not feel threatened either. So using that word by adults and other students needs to stop, and we want some support and policies around that, the use of the N-word not happening in our district, and that would be equitable, be equitable for all students if we work on that and build on that and get some correct professional development, professional development and community support and student support around that. And I think that's it, and I'm complete for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody who gave a standing report. Moving now to B10, agenda review and adoption. Does anybody have anything with the, leaving out consent to adjust or review? So I would like to propose that the discussion item on fiscal solvency immediately follows the superintendent's report. And I would like to propose that E4, which is the cellphone usage policy, becomes number one on the action items. So that's my, my motion. Would anybody like to second that?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion or questions? We'll go to a vote then. Trust, Student Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student, Student Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Anjana?
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Fulze?
Smith-Fulze, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Anjana, yes. Thank you. Moving on now to B11, Resolution 2425-49, recognizing Fred Korematsu Day 2025. Dr. Moses, I believe this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler, to invite our cabinet member, Director Rachel Forrest, to acknowledge the resolutions.
Thank you. Good evening, board, staff, and community. Now, therefore be resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education salute the legacy of Fred Tolia Subirro Korematsu and designate January 30th, 2025, as Spur T Korematsu Day.
Thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great. Are there any questions from board members? Would anybody like to put a motion on the floor?
President, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2425-49, recognizing Fred Korematsu Day as January 30th, 2025.
A second?
I'll second.
Is there any comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Wilson, Student Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Anjana?
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Fulze?
Smith-Fulze, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Anjana, yes. The motion passes unanimously. Time for B12, Resolution Number 2425.50, Dr. Martin Luther King Day of Service 2025. Dr. Moses, I believe this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. I'd like to pass it over to Director Forrest to acknowledge this resolution as well.
Thank you. Now, therefore be resolved that the Board of Education and the West Contra Costa Unified School District recognize Monday, January 20th, 2025, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service and encourage all schools to commemorate this, this occasion with appropriate instructional activities.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Seeing none, would anybody like to put a resolution, a motion on the floor to approve this resolution?
President, I make, I make a motion that we approve District Resolution Number 2425-50 in recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, January 20th, 2025.
Great. Is there a second? I'll second. Are there any comments on this item? Please, Trustee Smith-Fulze, go right ahead.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, in part, that the greatest stumbling block in the stride towards freedom is not the white citizen counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative piece, which is absence of tension, to a positive piece, which is presence of justice. I urge you all to hold on to these words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It is the moderate who needs to be bold, courageous, and to choose. Kendi said, there is no neutrality when it comes to racism. You are either actively fighting racism or you're actively choosing to allow it to persist. When we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we need to understand that he stood on the right side of history, even when people did not believe him. I'm complete.
Are there any other comments? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Student Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Just, Student Trustee Espinoza?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Anjana?
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Fulze?
Smith-Fulze, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Anjana, yes. The motion passes unanimously. Now we are up to C, business items for consent. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent, from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we can accept it as it stands. Great. Moving now to D, Superintendent Communication. Dr. Moses, it's your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. Could we bring up the presentation? I'm delighted to share that after the superintendent's report concludes, we will have a presentation by our student trustees as a part of this presentation this evening. Next slide. We want to start off by saying Happy New Year. And on behalf of the cabinet and the staff at West Contra Costa, we wish all of our families, students, students alike, a Happy New Year. We look forward to collaborating with everyone in this new year and continuing the great work across our district. Next slide. We'd like to acknowledge President Jimmy Carter, the 39th President of the United States. We're grateful for his contributions, his leadership service and service to our country, especially in education. We wanted to highlight that President Carter first held office, public office, as a school board member, a school board trustee, and as later, and later in his presidency, he signed Senate Bill 210 establishing the modern-day U.S. Department of Education. We are grateful to his contributions and in honor of his service, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next slide. We're grateful for the resolution, and we'd like to also acknowledge Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day and encourage our school sites to utilize this day as a day of service and commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities. Next slide. This month is School Appreciation, School Board Appreciation Month. We'd like to acknowledge the work of our board, their time, their effort, their dedication to our students, our community, our parents and staff alike. I know that this is a very difficult job, a very serious job, and I want to just commend our board for their tireless efforts to make the decisions that will best move our district forward and improve outcomes for our students. So thank you, school board. Next slide. We'd like to acknowledge a longtime employee who retired from the Business Services Department after 30 years of service. David Johnson was the Executive Director of General Services and served in that role in our district for over 20 years. We just wanted to acknowledge his level of service, and this was meant to come forward in December to wish him a happy retirement. So congratulations, David. Next slide. I also would like to share that there were some pivotal activities in December. The first one was our student summit. Our students, high school students across the district came together. There was a student summit that was hosted in order to provide a safe space for our students to share their, their experiences across the district and also to have their voices heard as students of color. Those sentiments also be implemented by administrators in order to create safe spaces across all of our schools. A special thanks to the team that put it together. It was a great event for students and it was enlightening for administrators as well. Administrators did not join the student session, but instead had their own session to also discuss safe spaces for students and their experiences. Next slide. We also, in December, hosted a city schools tour. We had dignitaries and local officials representing five cities in Wisconsin within our district, and we visited five schools across the district. Principals and students at those school sites shared their school programming, and the goal, and the goal of this event was to increase collaboration, spread the word about the great things happening in our district and solidify relationships of support and partnership for existing and future initiatives for our students and communities. Next slide. We included this slide to honor the staff that came together to make this an incredible event. So this is a slide of all of the staff members that both attended and planned for this event and just an appreciation for making this happen for our communities. Thank you, staff. Next slide. We wanted to acknowledge the Osirito Jazz Ensemble. They performed at the Midwest International Band and Orchestra Clinic in Chicago. This was an exhilarating experience for our artists, and not only they get to perform with professional musicians, but they also got to tour and see a bit of Chicago. So we wanted to share that as one of the highlights of how artists are learning more about their craft. Next slide. It is time for students to apply to colleges and scholarships, and we are so very pleased to announce that one of our students, a Richmond High School owner, Cecilia Mejia, has earned a full ride scholarship to Columbia University through the Quest Bridge Scholarship Program. We want to appreciate Quest Bridge for acknowledging our students and their hard work and providing this opportunity for our students to move on to an Ivy League, fully funded college experience. So congratulations, Cecilia, and congratulations, Richmond High. Next slide. We are beginning our enrollment period for new families. The enrollment period for the 25, 26 school year will begin on January 21st at 9:00 AM. Please check the website for information on how to look through our enrollment process with E- Please check the website for information on how to look through our enrollment process with E's and ways to get questions answered if they come up as you begin to enroll. Please spread the word throughout our community that we are ready and happy to accept our new families and serve them well. Next slide. This is the same flyer, but for in the Spanish language. Next slide. We also want to announce that transitional kindergarten enrollment is starting as well. If you have a four-year-old who is not quite ready for kinder, but is eligible for transitional kindergarten, we want your student in our school district. So please plan to enroll. There are some informational sessions happening for parents who are new to the district or new to the school system and would like to have their questions answered and learn more about our program. Those sessions are happening virtually on January seventh. That one was yesterday. We have another session happening on Tuesday, January fourteenth. Please encourage our families to attend should they need to learn about our transitional kindergarten program. Next slide. It is time for our students to leverage their opportunities to support funding their college education. The Richmond Promise Scholarship is open and ready for applicants to apply. They are offering fifteen hundred dollar scholarships per school year with at least four years of funding guaranteed. Our counselors are spreading word about this opportunity for our Richmond students, and we wanted to highlight it here as well. So apply for those scholarships. Next slide. We are happy to announce that the Ed Fair is coming up on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. We'd like for our families and our staff as well to register for this event to share in spreading word about opportunities within our district and also learning about programs across our school sites. So we encourage you to participate in this event. RSPVPs before January tenth will enter into a raffle to win a hundred dollar gift card, so RSVP early. Next slide. I'd like to read our district statement regarding addressing the staffing vacancies across the district. As an educational institution, it is extremely critical to our work that we have our students with effective and consistent instruction each day. So we did want to explain our reassignments and why we have landed on this decision as difficult as it may be. California has experienced a teacher staffing shortage. Many districts across the state struggle to find a solution to address this nationwide teacher shortage. Our district is reassigned, is in the process of reassigning highly qualified and credentialed teachers who are currently not assigned to classrooms in order to fill where vacancies exist. While we do recognize that this shift is disruptive to our dedicated staff members who are being reassigned to new positions, this transition will directly benefit over a thousand students who have been without a consistent credential teacher in their classrooms. These students will now have access to a high-quality, stable learning environment, which is the priority guiding these changes. We will support our teachers' insights during this transition period. It is our goal to provide effective instruction in order to improve the academic outcomes for our students, and that is what has led this decision. Next slide. Finally, we'd just like to remind our community about the opportunities to engage in our district committees. Committees are where the work happens and where decisions are often made and information is shared. We have the APAC Committee, the ASAC Committee, the DLCAP Committee, the MDAC, Multilingual District Advisory Committee. The dates and times for these meetings are listed here and are also listed on our website. You can find information about when these meetings are occur, occurring if you check our events calendar on the website. We also want to acknowledge our CAC, which is a Special Education Community Advisory Council, and the DLI PAC, which is a Dual Language Immersion Parent Advisory Committee. We encourage you to get involved and engage with us to collaborate regarding supporting the students across our district. Next slide. Oh, finally, two more, the CBOC and the Seven Eleven Committee are two additional opportunities to engage in decisions that are being made across our district or facilities. And that concludes the superintendent's report. I'd like to now pass it over to our student trustees and have them introduce themselves and their presentation. Can you bring up the presentation? All right, this is your item.
Well, good evening to everyone once again, Gavin and the rest of the board trustees. Thank you again, Superintendent Moses, for this opportunity and for your help and support in all of this. So I would like to introduce once again my founding trust, student trustee Luke Wilson in our student trustee report. So this report consists of what we have been able to accomplish and our aspirations and our goals are in the, not only the long-term end, but as well as what we're looking at right now. So what we're looking at right now is ensuring awareness of student rights. And what this looks like is that student rights are presented throughout all classrooms and staff facilities in every WCCUST classroom and school. On October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, me alongside student trustee Luke Wilson, proposing sharing awareness of student rights in WCCUST. And the goal, once again, is to ensure all students know their rights by explaining these rights throughout every single classroom. And the reason for this is to empower students to know, not only know their rights, but to also more respect and accountability, not just within students, but also all of our staff as well. And the next step is to finalize a clear list of rights using surveys, design and distribution, and distribute posters, and our expected implementation is still to be decided. I would also like to give our own thanks to trustee Gonzalez Roy for taking time out of his own time to even go to California Governance to bring this presented to them on his own without, not even our own knowledge. And I would like to thank that once again for ensuring that our voices are heard, especially at whatever level it is. Next slide, please. We also decided, well, not decided, the board decided that there would be a revision of Bylaw nine one fifty. So that means that student trustees are now officially paid by law. On the seventh, fourth, twenty twenty-four, the revision of Bylaw nine one fifty was approved, which allows WCCUST student trustees to officially agree financial compensation and high school credit. I would also like to once again give thanks to trustee Gonzalez Roy once again for cooperating so well and so closely with me and student trustee Luke Wilson in getting this revised in better language so that we not only student trustees can understand and what they expect, what they should expect, but also to make history. So this revision was initially passed on July seventeenth. For those who do not know, Bylaw, in twenty twenty-four, nine one fifty was adopted in compliance with Assembly Bill number two seventy-five in school governance and revised language and logistics of how student trustees are compensated and finalized in pay were all of that revision of the Bylaw. And we explained how, which is how me and my founding student trustee Wilson cooperatively with the board, the revision, ensuring clarity for details. And what we look ahead is to, not only the continuation of this revision, but also clarity for future student trustees, more community engagement and opportunities for student trustees, and more outreach for student trustee diversity. Next slide, please. I would also like to announce that All Student Congress is back. All Student Congress is a student group formed by two student representatives from every seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade from each K through eight high school, middle, K through eight middle school, excuse me, and high school in WCCUST. So what we do is we unite to influence school culture and climate and provide meaningful input on student votes and decisions that directly impact them. So something new this year at All Student Congress is we want students to learn about the DLCAP, District Local Control Accountability Plan, and provide feedback to the District Local Control Accountability Plan Parent-Student Committee. The deadline to join is January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And for more information, you can contact Myra, next slide, please. So goals and aspirations. Aspirations, West Contra Costa Unified School District Student Bill of Rights can be adopted. Finalized revision of Bylaw nine one fifty for student trustees. And there's a special report coming up. Goals, implementation of a student advisory panel, more student trustee community engagement, which can look like visiting school sites alongside the board to be able to interact with students one-on-one and really hear from them. And CTE programs for K through eight students. Next slide, please. So moving on to our special report, next slide. So supporting student-led proposed climate resolution, next slide. So just to give some background, a student at Osito High School drafted a resolution titled Education Response to the Climate Emergency, focusing on integrating climate literacy into West Contra Costa Unified School District education. Some key highlights from the resolution is the peer commitment to climate change. We want students to graduate with a deeper understanding of climate change and how it impacts the world around us and the possible solutions we can take to combat it. Creation of an environmental literacy working group. Development, develop a K through eight climate literacy curriculum, provide professional development for educators, and assist and coordinate existing environmental initiatives. I would like to thank Gonzalez Roy for working closely with me with this resolution, and I hope to bring it to the board for a vote in the near future. Next slide. To wrap up our presentation, if you have any questions, please let us know.
Great, thank you so much, that was fantastic. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Dr. Moses, for your report, and thank you, student trustees. That was great. I was curious to hear a little bit more about one of your goals and aspirations for the future, which is a student advisory panel. Could you talk to us just a little bit about what that would look like and what it is? Just so that we get a little bit of context.
Be close to working with All Student Congress and having a specific group in All Student Congress advocating for changes that they foresee. So it would be beyond just giving the student trustees information to bring to the board, actually having a group possibly doing public comment and things of that nature to bring to the board. I would also like to add on that this is also a goal in terms of reference to what we see to our neighboring districts, not only in-state but out-of-state. Many of these districts have representatives from every high school within the district as a student advisory panel, panelist, which basically they advise the board on every resolution, every bill, every bylaw that is passed or discussed or in review and discussion, and how it impacts not only their school and their peers, but on a deeper level as in the district as well. So continuing off what Luke says, instead of just having it specifically nine students, it could look as like students from All Student Congress who represent the high schools that are representing, that are being represented in All Student Congress. These are, of course, aspirations. These are up for more discussion, whether it's now or even behind closed doors. This is one of our aspirations.
Thank you, thank you so much for that. President, that was my only question.
Does anybody else have any questions? I do, so first, that was fantastic. Would you be able to talk to the timing on a student bill of rights? And also a climate resolution? Was there any, you know, was there a timeframe that you were thinking about?
For the student bill of rights, because I understand that me and trustee Wilson are soon to be headed off to wherever our designated college admissions tends to be. But our designated timeline would be as soon as in one to two years, because we understand the long process and structure in navigating the system to get something like this on the agenda alone, let alone for it to be passed and to give, get all the thumbs up. So for the student bill of rights, I think me and trustee Wilson can agree that we would like to see it in at least two years, if we're given enough grace of one year, one and a half year. But that's our hope for timeline in terms of the student bill of rights. I would just like to add to that. I would hope that we can have a first draft completed by the end of this school year, since All Student Congress will be starting next month. So hopefully we can work with most students than just ourselves to get more feedback and have a draft ready for the board to review.
Climate literacy or the climate resolution, is there a timetable on that one as well?
President, may I add to that, because they sent it to Governance? What we talked about with trustee Wilson and the author of the resolution, Governance, is that it'll be a really great and lengthy resolution that had a lot of financial impact. So staff asked for a couple months to review what was needed for us to actually be able to, what we didn't want to do is downsize it to the point where it wasn't effective. So staff just asked for a little bit of time to review it and find out what we would need to do in order to actually implement it to fruition. And it's supposed to come back for a first read at the next Governance meeting for the committee.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And so just one final thing, just so I'm writing and taking some good notes. So the student bill of rights, the, the expectation is that this work is going to continue to live in the All Student Congress? They'll continue to carry that forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, if nobody has anything else on that item, we will now move up. F one fiscal solvency plan, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven, for discussion. And Dr. Moses, I believe this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. I'd like to just introduce the item with a little context. It's in the summary of the preces. That based upon current projections, our district must implement a thirteen million dollar reduction plan in addition to the reductions that we were able to achieve last year. That although our current budget meets the standard of positive certification, it relies heavily on over thirty-seven million dollars in contribution from Fund seventeen reserves in order to be able to meet our financial obligations and address the structural budget deficit in the current year and the next two years. So we must address the future fiscal uncertainty to ensure that our district can continue to meet its financial obligation. I'd like to present to you a summary of the plan that was attached to the agenda. And so I'll begin the presentation now with this first slide, which outlines the executive summary of exactly what's happening here. We are in year two of a previously adopted fiscal solvency plan by the previous board. Nineteen million in reductions were achieved last year and implemented this current year. Year two of the previously approved plan requires that we identify seven million dollars in reduction to be implemented next year. In addition to that requirement and reviewing our budget stance at first interim, our current projections require that we plan to identify further reductions totaling six million in the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year, due primarily to our heavy reliance on reserves in order to meet our three percent reserve requirement. Next slide. Line didn't change. Oh, there we go, okay. There are need for reductions. The reason why we need these reductions is that for many years now, our district has experienced significant structural budget deficit. What that means is that we're spending out more than we're bringing in as revenue to take care of our basic operating expenses. This reduction plan pertains to our operating fund only. If you read through the plan that's attached to the board agenda, there is an explanation of another funding source, which we call restricted funds. I just want to name that those funds are not addressed in this fiscal solvency plan and cannot be identified as a part of our fiscal solvency planning. Fund reserve, Fund seventeen reserves is our, for lack of a better word, we can call it our rainy day fund, in order to So lack of a better word, we can call it our rainy day fund in order to support us during um certain fiscal times such as now. Um however, we are estimated to exhaust almost all of those funds. In the current multi-year projection and that's the issue that we need to address. Uh one time COVID funding has expired. Um we're experiencing declining enrollment. And at the same time, our average daily attendance rate for our students, which is how we're funded, is is decreasing. Um. So the unfunded and underfunded mandates from the state and federal government are also impacting our bottom line. More specifically, uh the contributions that we must make for a special education program in order to ensure that we can meet the needs of our media. Our uh most intense students and make sure that they have a uh the educational experience that they deserve and require as well. Next slide. This slide demonstrates our enrollment trend and we have three data points here. If you look at the purple uh trend line, that is our funded ADA. I'm going to explain shortly. Uh the dashed orange line is our actual average daily attendance. And then the blue bars represent our enrollment, our prior enrollment. And our expected enrollment currently and our future enrollment projections. If you follow the bars starting at twenty eighteen, you can clearly see the reduction in enrollment that our district has experienced. And twenty eighteen, we had twenty eight thousand one hundred twenty two students. In the current year, uh we've certified uh enrollment of twenty five thousand two hundred seventy three students. The decline in enrollment has resulted in a decline of revenue. Um our, in addition, our student rate of average daily attendance, although we have twenty five thousand two hundred seventy three students currently enrolled. Um it's projected that based upon our trend. Based upon what we've seen in prior years, that our average daily attendance is going to amount to about twenty three thousand three hundred twelve students. Um our funded ADA is an average. We're able to use an average of the pre- the current year and the prior two years. And if you notice that purple line, um we were receiving more funding than we actually. Had realized in our attendance because we were able to use our prior year enrollment when we had more students in our district. That was calculated um in the formula to determine our average daily attendance funding rate. Well, unfortunately, our enrollment is now flatlined and at three year average is not um. An elevated number as we were able to benefit from in the past. So we're now. Needing to adjust in order to ensure that the amount of funding that we get, that we bring in is uh matching the um. Expenditures and resources that we spend out. Next slide. Um these slides have a lot of numbers on them, but I wanted to give you a clear picture of our multi-year projections for a restricted operating budget. I am not going to review them all in their entirety, but they are here for your review and I'm always happy to take. Questions by email um for the community if you are inclined to to share. Um if we could click the fly-ins, I'd like to highlight a few things on this slide. Um the first thing I'd like to highlight. Right click. Is uh this green bar shows our contributions from Fund seventeen. So if you look at the revenue that we're expected to bring in, it's the first three, I'm sorry, the first four rows. Uh the restricted revenue from our federal government, you'll see there is no funding there because we are not able to um. That funding is restricted solely. It cannot be added to our operating budget. Uh we're expected to contribute eleven point five million from our uh Fund seventeen reserves this year. Thirteen point five million next year and um previously this was. Thirteen million in year three. We need to get that down to seven million in order to satisfy uh the ability to. Comfortably meet the obligations of our fifteen percent reserve. Click. Yes, I'd also like to highlight our contributions to our required program. Click. If you see in that. Row, it shows that we are actually contributing in the current year one hundred six point eight million. Dollars to our restricted programs. This is a requirement in order to ensure that we can serve our special education population uh to fidelity. And if you'll notice in the out years, that amount is expected to increase slightly um due to step in column increases for staff. The yellow bar below shows our total revenues and these are revenues after we've contributed. Our funding from Fund seventeen and also after we've subtracted the contributions that were required to make to those programs. Next slide. On this slide, we're showing uh our expenses that um we have budgeted for the current year and the next two years and these. Budgets are created based upon our current rate of spending and our program needs. It shows that total expenditures um for our next three years are expected to be. Two hundred sixty three million, two hundred seventy one and two hundred seventy five uh over the next three years. Next slide. I repeated those numbers here so that we can do a comparison to our revenues and our expenditures and. The the net decrease that we'll experience due to the lack of funding that we have to cover these experience. These expenditures. You'll notice that even with the Fund seventeen reserves. That we are still operating at a deficit in this current year, five point two million is the estimated deficit. And in the next years, you'll see those numbers represented there as well. Um when you look at our beginning fund balance and ending fund balance after expenditures are taken care of. Uh you'll see that we are just barely making the state's requirement. Of ensuring that that three percent reserve is um. Set aside as required by law. Next slide. Oh, sorry. Uh this budget reduction plan is represented here in the yellow boxes. And it is showing that we have to identify seven million in cuts for the twenty five twenty six school year. And then in the following year, we have to make sure that we keep those cuts out and identify an additional six million dollars in reductions. And by doing that, we can meet our three percent reserve. If we were not to do that, then those amounts would appear as uh deeper structural deficits and. We would not be able to set aside our required three percent reserves. Next slide. I wanted to highlight that it appears in this current year that we may have an ending fund balance of about two million dollars. The reality is uh the budget team has planned for that ending balance uh to be there as a placeholder. Because every year in January, um the health um. The cost of healthcare increases. And the increases to healthcare are not yet built into the budget because we do not know exactly how much that's going to cost for all employees. At the end of this current month, January, we will understand what those increases amount to. We anticipate that they're going to be about two million dollars. So what you see there is an union fund balance. When we present our second interim report. That amount will not be there because it will be dedicated to paying the increases in the health premiums. That uh we are required to pay starting January one. Next slide. So reductions are extremely difficult. Our district faces so many challenges already. And the need to reduce is an uncomfortable space to be in for all of us, um not just. Our our board trustees, our leadership team, but absolutely for our staff in our community and we try to. Identify ways in which to accomplish what we must accomplish in these reductions. And do it in a way in which we have minimal impact on programs. With that said, as an educator, I recognize that all of our programs are valuable. And every penny that we spend on students is a penny well spent. However, the number of pennies that we have is not enough pennies to cover everything that we have. Um that we desire to allocate monies to, so we must identify ways to align. The revenue that we receive with the expenditures that we plan to spend out. This reduction plan is an attempt to provide a plan in order to ensure that we can meet our financial obligations. And also satisfy the requirements of the law. In the budget reduction plan uh planning document. Uh these reductions are presented differently. They're presented by position. In this presentation, I wanted to share with you the reductions in a different way so that we could quantify. Exactly where these cuts are happening and and identify how. Our district team is trying to accomplish these reductions and make adjustments to programs. With the least amount of impact to students and schools. Um we do know that any reductions we make, there is going to be an impact. I don't want to minimize that fact and I want to acknowledge that this is going to be very difficult moving ahead. That we're dedicated to doing this with dignity and with support and in the um. In the best way possible in order to retain our level of service and our programs for our school sites and communities. So what I'd like to show here is how we've restructured our central office services in order to achieve some of these reductions. Last year, we made nineteen million in reductions and the reductions were um across the board and they were very difficult to achieve. We were clear this year that we needed to identify reductions that did not take away um critical staff from schools. And in that these reductions were identified in a way in which we had a plan to maintain a. Quality level of service even though we must reduce. Uh so what we're proposing are reductions to the central office staffing. Uh in the business services department, the educational services department, the special education department. General services department, in the IT, Internet Integrated Technology Department and the operations department. Uh the cabinet sat down, put heads together and tried to figure out how we could restructure. And achieve these reductions and still accomplish the work and um. And dedicate the time and energy needed to ensure that we're building, continuing to build great programs and getting great results um within our. School sites. So these reductions to central office positions and services total three point two million dollars. And the cabinet is hard at work trying to ensure that we have a plan. Um to cover all necessary and required work to move our programs, even though these reductions are necessary. Next slide. This slide addresses program alignment and adjustments. Each one of these lines represents a plan. A plan to adjust um how we are. Managing programs across the district so that we can align them better to the revenue that we have to run them. Um so you'll see that we are making some proposed changes. There is not an attempt to eliminate any programs. I did hear the concerns about IB. I know that in the first line, you see independent studies and the last line, you see visual and performing arts. And I want to say very clearly that we are not eliminating programs. We are not eliminating programs. What we are doing is working within the programs to align them based upon what makes sense fiscally. And how we can best serve our students with the least amount of impact to what we currently offer them. Um. After a conversation uh and discussion this evening by the board, um we will look at these and and explain. More in depth exactly what all of these line items mean. Um but I can say with certainty that this this plan does not impact. Our staffing model as it relates to making sure that the students that are enrolled in our district. Have quality instructors to implement programs that will continue to move along. Uh their academic uh success and the experiences across our schools. We have how I identified programs where we do believe we can make these adjustments and still provide a quality service for students. Realizing that this is a heavy lift and I'm not taking this lightly and. I assure you that no, my leadership team does take these cuts lightly, but we do have to do the job of aligning our budget. And ensuring that we can meet our financial obligations. So um I look forward to going in depth. With you and I encourage you to look at the plan where there is a little bit more level of detail about what these cuts entail. Next slide. I wanted to also provide a summary of what these cuts look like in terms of positions and impact. Uh these are the reductions that are proposed for the twenty five twenty six school year, what we just witnessed on our previous two slides. And I just want to point out that although we know that reductions are difficult regardless of what our current staffing. Um model is that um we are proposing that we reduce forty three positions in order to achieve fiscal solvency. And those forty three positions equate to one point two eight percent of the staffing that we have in the district. So I want to reiterate that uh we do want to ensure that this is done with dignity and that we're doing everything we can to. Ensure that we don't lose staff, but that we find other places for them because we also know that we have vacancies across the district. But we are proposing that we do reduce one point two eight percent of our workforce in order to achieve six point six million in reductions. In order to achieve our fiscal solvency planning. I also want to highlight that there's also five hundred and eighty four thousand in service reductions and the two um. Uh components equate to the seven point two million, which is our cut target that was agreed upon in our previously approved fiscal solvency plan. Next slide. I also wanted to present just an outline of uh of uh. Explanation of how we might achieve the six million dollars in reduction for the year of twenty six twenty seven. Um there has not been a plan put into place but in order to satisfy um. The requirements of ensuring that during our first interim, we could show that we're addressing our structural deficit. We did estimate on what these reductions in the twenty six twenty seven year could look like. And so that's represented here uh with the expectation that we would need to cut about one point four percent. Uh additionally of our total workforce in order to achieve the reductions in the twenty six twenty seven school year. Uh we would have careful planning and thoughtful conversations about how to achieve those when the time comes. Next slide. Finally, I just wanted to go back to the summary of why we need these reductions. If we do not achieve the reductions for the twenty five twenty six school year and the twenty six twenty seven school year. We will not be in compliance, which could lead to um. Receiver ship of our district, which means we would not no longer be in control of making the budgetary decisions for our schools. Next slide. Again, highlighting that need. Next slide. Just wanted to summarize and I want to read this statement because um want to be very clear that we understand this is not um something that we take lightly. The continuation of our fiscal solvency plan is necessary. It's necessary to ensure that our district's fiscal solvency. Our district is fiscally solvent and can maintain local control over our budget decisions. We understand that these reductions will directly affect individuals who have dedicated their careers to serving our students. Please remember that these recommendations are not made lightly and are driven only by the need to align our expenditures with our revenues. And address the district's structural deficit. Next slide. We also understand that we have a responsibility to try and um work on ways to increase revenue for our district. Our school budgets have to be planned based upon what we know to be true in the moment. However, we also know that if we are successful in increasing our attendance or increasing our average daily rate of attendance for our students. That that will equate to increased revenue for our district. And what will happen if we can increase the revenue for our district, then we will rescind the reductions that we're approving. So we do have a plan to support um increased attendance at our school sites. I want to leverage and raise um a fact that. Although our revenue is driven by attendance, if we can improve attendance, if we currently were at ninety two point two percent of average daily attendance. If we increase that by two point eight percent and we're able to get to ninety five percent of average daily attendance. That would increase our revenue by seven point seven million dollars and that would erase our need to make these reductions at all. So I wanted to lift that up and say that as a system, we all need to work together in order to try and increase. The attendance across our district and within every school site. Uh because with each one percent increase in our average daily attendance, that would equate to about two point seven five million dollars. So if we could get beyond ninety five percent, that would be even better. Um but we're also looking at ways to increase enrollment, to attract families to our district. Um and also uh ways to decrease the operating expenses that we currently have. Um there is also a potential and opportunity to shift some of our supplemental services for our students to the restricted funding sources. We do have grants and one-time monies that can supplement our instructional program. However, those monies are restricted. And uh set aside for specific supplemental services. So we do need to plan, long-term plan in terms of. So we do need to plan, long-term plan, in terms of uh what we can do with those funds as we have to trim our general operating budget expenditures. Next slide. That concludes my presentation on the fiscal reduction plan. And this evening, we are asking the board just to review this plan and to hold discussion. And we would we would bring this plan in some form on January twenty-ninth to ask the board for action in order to stay compliant with what's been um asked of us by the County Office of Education. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, our first public columnist, Lon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just want to say, um Dr. Moses, that was a wonderful report, horrible to hear, but a wonderful report. And I just want to say your report that you did earlier was also awesome. And I like that you highlighted all the things that were coming. You made it a bittersweet and the tour was awesome. That I feel you guys need to do more of that. And the student's trustee information was good. I just hope when you're doing budget, when you do this, when you look at equity, ensuring that the data is good for all students requires different resources. So when you look at the resources, you can't find one resource and say, oh, this is all we can do. The uh data, the resources that different students need, I hope you're taking into consideration so that we can change um the data and continue the programs and services that are working that they um can, that the ones that you're going to continue to fund and stay. And I hope that our district does better in the future. I'm complete.
Next public columnist, Sarah Torni. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, how are you guys doing tonight? Uh my name is Sarah Torni. And I have a junior at Penole Valley High School and an eighth grader at Penole Middle School. I'm going to quote a notice that is circulating saying that there may be a million, a hundred thousand dollar cut to the IB programming. And um although it is unclear if this cut is aimed at a particular school or a portion of the IB continuum, it will reduce funding of material and administrative costs. Or if it is aimed at the price of personnel or even exam fees. Um we're unclear about that, but what is clear is that a loss of funding will affect the program implementation and perhaps even the ability to continue to operate as an IB world school. We do not have AP at Penole Valley High School. Um and although there is not a specific school named, PVHS is on the chopping block and there are over fifty-two percent of juniors and seniors taking IB classes right now. And that would be detrimental to their college careers. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comment.
Great. Okay, we're going to questions from the board. We'll do three each. And does anybody have questions that they would like to ask on this item? Trustee Vincent, I'll just want to go, go ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Moses, thank you so much for the presentation. My first question is around the multi-year projections. The governor just released the first draft of his budget for next year. The COLA, I noticed, is less than what's on your slide. So does that mean that our deficit long-term is greater than what's shown on the multi-year projection?
Thank you for the question. Yes, that's exactly what that means. I don't, I don't look at the numbers, but if I remember correctly, we anticipated a COLA of about two point nine three percent. And I believe the governor has um shared that we expect the COLA to be about two point five eight or two point five three, two point four three. Yeah, so there's about a half percent reduction in what we expect to receive in COLA. We'll have to adjust that at second interim. So we will be showing less revenue at second interim.
Okay, thank you. Uh we heard a couple of public comment about the elimination of dual immersion and the internationals program. Is that part of this?
There are no proposed cuts to those programs.
Thank you. And then third, I heard you, there's no elimination to programs, uh just some reductions in alignment in the proposal. Uh can you talk about the arts materials and supplies reduction for the sites? Is that the whole application for arts and supplies or is it just a reduction to it?
Thank you for the question. So that reduction uh line item pertains to two specific uh funding sources. So the first is um for many years through the LCAP program, our VA department has asked that we allocate two hundred and fifty dollars to each site in order for them to be able to purchase arts and materials supplies like paints and brushes and and things of that nature. It's a very small amount, but we realized that it it was a help to our schools. Um so the total amount of the two hundred and fifty dollars per site was fourteen thousand dollars. We now have Prop twenty-eight funding. We also have currently for the next couple of years, Arts Music Block Grant that can supplement that fourteen thousand dollars. So we're recommending that that fourteen thousand dollars be reduced from the general fund because we're able to supplement it with restricted funds. Um similarly, the remaining amount of that reduction is twenty thousand dollars that was previously going to the high school to the secondary theaters. They were getting five thousand dollars each in in order to um purchase materials and supplies, replenish, repair, take care of our theaters. Uh well, after some evaluation, what we found is that we actually have the rental fees that we've been collecting from our theaters can actually be used to supplement the amount that was coming out of general fund to support our theaters. So we will absolutely continue to support our theaters, but the funding source will now be from the collection of rental fees. So that's a good example of how we've tried to work within these proposed reductions to ensure that we maintain what sites need, but also make a reduction to the general fund.
Thank you, Dr. Moses. Uh those are my three questions, President. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Questions on this side? Please go right ahead.
Uh thank you, Dr. Moses, for your presentation. I have two questions. My, the first question is, when you mentioned uh the alignment with enrollment, where is the enrollment data being sourced from? Is it for current year? Is it projection? Is it uh enrollment from the past two years, a year ago?
Thank you for the question. There's two things that relate to the enrollment alignment. Uh the first was the proposed changes to the Virtual Academy program. Currently, that uh program serves very few students in grades K to three. So we're trying to um make changes to the program so that we're allocating for FTEs for classrooms that have very few students in them. Uh we'll be working with the program, um the administrator over the program in order to accomplish that. But uh currently, and I think I can share, we have approximately eleven students in grades K to three. But we have four teachers allocated to K to three. Um so the four teachers should be serving about eighty-eight students. Instead, the four teachers are serving about eleven students. That's a longer conversation because I do understand they've been repurposed in other ways, but the reality is they're allocated for that purpose and we don't have enough students to justify that. That's an example of how the enrollment is being adjusted. We do not currently have a waiting list for those grade levels, and so we're looking to make some adjustments based upon the need there. Uh the second thing is that uh we did assign some additional FTE to secondary schools with special schedules, special schedules outside of the contracted staffing um model. And we will be um trying to align closer to the staffing model. And so in that way, because we've assigned additional teachers outside of what's required for enrollment, we do have a plan to pull those back and um continue to staff our schools so that we can serve all students, but not we we aren't in a position to continue to give them extra.
Thank you. And my second question is, how will the proposed reduction impact our historically underserved populations, to name some, our ELL community, our students with disability um moving forward and in the future?
Thank you for the question. So um this is the reason why I try to highlight our availability of restricted funds. Uh because we do believe that we can continue to provide higher, higher levels of supplemental services for those students because there are funding streams that are dedicated to serving those students and those students alone. We have Title I funds, which are, it's a healthy amount of funding each year. We have Title III funds for ELS. Um we have several grants that we utilize. For example, um we have a grant called CalMoo that supports the um expenditures related to our newcomer program and our um elementary newcomer program. So we're leveraging restricted funds in order to ensure that we are planning to use all of the restricted funds to meet the needs of those students. Um however, we aren't in a position to use general funds to provide those supplemental services. So we're very fortunate to have additional um millions of dollars in location that we can spread across the district to leverage services for those students of need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moses, for your presentation. Uh my questions are, uh what specific strategies are being implemented to address the decline in enrollment and increase the um average daily ADA?
That's a lovely question. Thank you for the question, Clarkanyana. Well, I think that there are levels to what we need to work towards in order to attract families to our district. I think um first and foremost, the relationship, the relationships that we hold with our communities um really go a long way in order to reinforce our desire to provide not only a great academic and educational experience for students, but a partnership with parents. I think the first level of addressing that is to really work with our site staff in order to leverage their relationships and market their schools to share the great things that are happening. Um with that said, attracting students to our district is going to take more than just a campaign of, you know, sharing some of the great things that we're doing. We also need to retain the programs that are desirable to families. And we need to figure out a way to do that. In addition, we need to work with our school sites primarily with the average daily attendance issue. Um increasing enrollment, I think, will happen authentically once we are able to continue to highlight the great programs that we do offer. So I think it's part marketing, it's part relationship, and it's a lot of great planning, a lot of great planning so that um what we're doing for our students is evident and that we're proving to the community that we have a lot to offer their children.
Yeah, my second question goes right along there. Are you thinking about targeted plans, especially for schools with the lowest ADA? Like, we're emphasizing on that.
Thank you for that question. I may pass this over to our um Associate Superintendent of Operations because it's her department that's implementing um the planning in order to address the enrollment and attendance growth that we desire. Uh but I will say that I think we need more than just one plan. And I know that we are on our way um to, we have a few plans that are happening now and we're continually putting heads together as a cabinet in order to come up with more ideas on how to address that. And I'll pass this over to Ms. Segura for additional comments.
Yeah, thank you. I would agree with Dr. Moses that it is multifaceted. Our approach for the last few years has been to deeply target chronic absenteeism with the idea that if we reduce chronic absenteeism, we will increase attendance. That campaign has been successful. And we've continued. We actually have a thirteen percent reduction in chronic absenteeism year-to-date. The good news is our kids don't meet the threshold or not as many for chronic absenteeism. The bad news is that strategy is no longer pushing up overall attendance because the number of students that are chronically truant has reduced. So we need to switch strategies. We will still address chronic absenteeism, but we need now to broaden the outreach um and look at students who are missing a few days of school, but don't actually meet that chronic absenteeism level. The Why We Show Up campaign is launching. Uh and we are also looking at how we allocate the time with our principals to make this part of the climate PLCs. Really looking at how do we make this tier one? How do we invest teachers, office staff, principals in the outreach so that the same message is going to parents?
Okay, my last question. Um what innovative strategies beyond ADA increases are we exploring to generate revenue for the district?
Thank you for the question. Um the last slide in my presentation, we touched on some of the ways in which we think we can make an impact on that. It's difficult to predict the future. What we can do is plan in the, in, you know, here and now in order to make our district more attractive. I think that as a cabinet, we're constantly discussing ways in which to generate more to increase our enrollment. However, I don't know that that's within our realm of influence. And here and now, it's going to take some time to build. So I think we need a multi-year plan. I need, I think that there are some things that we can do right now, which was addressed. And um I also think that an analysis of how we're spending can go a long way. I'm going to pass it over to, uh who had their hand up? Was it you? I thought somebody raised their hand to speak. No? Um but I agree with you that we need a multifaceted approach. However, it is um when it comes to the operating budget, it's really cut and dry. We only get the number, we only get the revenue based upon the number of children we have in seats. And because that's the case of how we generate funding for the operating expenses of our district, the only way in which we can increase that revenue is to increase the number of students in seats. So we'll continue to work at it. Um and I welcome your recommendations and you know, other community members that might want to work with us on that, but um plain and simple, we get revenue based upon number of students. So the only answer to how we can generate more in terms of addressing this issue is by increasing our enrollment.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a couple. They did great work, so I only have a couple of things. I also want to come back to the unrestricted NYPD. And I want to touch on Fund Seventeen, which now adds up over these three years to thirty-two point two million. Just at the first interim, it was at thirty-eight point two million. And, you know, you explained that you thought that there was going to be interest in that number. So what happened between December eighteenth and tonight where this comes down to thirty-two point two million?
Great question. So our budgets are reviewed and accepted and we get feedback from the County Office of Education, which is our oversight unit. Um based upon the way in which our contribution to restricted programs is increasing, when we adopted our budget, um we anticipated that our contribution to special way it would be fourteen million less than what it is currently. Because the contribution increased by fourteen million, the county office and reviewing our numbers really felt that it was risky just to exhaust all of our funds because hidden expenses are popping up and we can't control them when it's connected to something like a restricted program. So there was a request from the county office that we reevaluate our fiscal solvency plan in order to ensure that we weren't exhausting all reserves because they anticipate that in year four, we're going to also need some relief from Fund Seventeen. And they were not comfortable giving us a qua, um a positive certification. Um we self-certified as positive, but we run the risk of being downgraded to qualified if we don't satisfy this requirement to further reduce in order not to exhaust reserves. I think the fear there is once reserves are exhausted, if we have a fourteen million dollar deficit, we don't have anywhere to support our district in meeting our financial obligations because reserves would be gone. So that's the difference in why we, what we're trying to do is not exhaust reserves and leave about seven million in reserves that year four, where we're actually estimated to continue to be at a structural deficit even with these cuts if we don't drastically change the alignment of how we're spending.
Okay. And then I'd like to touch on the IB because of the way the LCAP was written. And then I'd like to touch on the IB because of the way the LCAP was written, I can no longer tell how big that program is. Well, what does taking a hundred thousand dollars out of that program do? Is there anything left to it or?
Thank you for the question. We went to the overall budget for IB. It's a very desirable program, but it is a very expensive program. We are not proposing that we make any changes to staffing. We do understand that the courses are needed. However, what we're looking at are the fees that are charged by the International Baccalaureate oversight entity. Perhaps in looking at, for example, the number of exams that we're paying for, we're finding that the rate of passing those exams is not very high. So we're expending lots of money to pay for exams that ultimately our students are not really successful in completing. So the primary thing that we're looking at is perhaps changing the structure of how we offer students exams in that program, meaning how well are you doing in your courses and do you desire to take the exam? That is where our initial thoughts were for how we could achieve reductions because ultimately paying large amounts of money for students to take an exam that it's, we can already predict won't go well, isn't a good use of funds.
Okay, and then finally, so the next time we have a regularly scheduled board meeting is on January twenty-ninth and this is on the docket. So we've just sort of unpacked this. What's your plan to hear us out? Hear community out, gather your, gather us together? What, what does that look like?
We've already had some community outreach. We held a couple of budget committee meetings. There isn't really a plan to adjust unless the board gives direction to adjust. So I think that for me, next steps could be agendizing this for our retreat that's coming up in order to take a, a deep look at exactly what line items are included in this plan for further discussion. At that point, I'm happy to take whatever direction the board gives, but we don't, as a cabinet, we don't have a plan to go back and rework unless we're asked to.
Okay. All right, so we'll make sure that that's on that retreat agenda. Okay, so we'll move to comments. Does anybody have comments? Please go ahead. Two minutes on the clock.
Thank you. Sorry, everyone, I'm waiting for the clock, not just. Thank you. So I mean, I think that we all understand that really our schools are starving for resources. They're starving for staff, they're starving for programs, they're starving for supports. And I think for our schools specifically, they have a lot of needs, especially in the Flatland area where our students are not achieving academically. And they actually need even more and greater supports. And I think that the last few years, what we've been doing, and two years ago, we cut ten million dollars. Last year, we cut nineteen million. Now we're cutting even greater and we're gonna have to apparently do it for the next few years. I think it's imperative for us that this becomes a priority that instead of just cutting and cutting and cutting, we do the opposite and we bring resources. And I'm looking at you, Dr. Moses, but really it's for us as a board to figure out like what our plan is going to be to increase attendance. But I really appreciate it, I think, trustee Yanis' question about what is our strategy to look at our schools where we have the least attendance? And I think that we need to ask more of those questions because we have to do something. Because on top of these cuts, the parcel taxes ending, which is ten million dollars, community schools grant, which is thirty-four, thirty-eight million, it's at this point ending, right? And then on top of that, our sped costs, which we need to do, continue to increase. In twenty-twenty, we're spending thirty-eight million dollars in sped costs. This year, we spent over a hun, over a hundred million dollars on sped costs. So I think that it has to be a burger approach or sandwich approach where we're looking at how we're investing. But then we're also looking at how we are looking for further revenue. And every year we talk about it, like, oh, we need to partner, we need to do this. We actually need to have a plan as a board, because otherwise, we're gonna slowly disappear to the point where we have nothing else to cut. And we're already hearing the impact of those cuts as it is. So I encourage us to do that and figure out a way. Thank you so much.
Does anybody else have comments? Please, please go right ahead. Two minutes.
I think that to trustee Gonzalez Hoy's point, there has to be a both and approach. But I also think that we need to continue to look at those things that are in our direct control. When we're talking about how much we spend in legal fees, when we're talking about simply going to a school and we don't have the lights cut on all the time, there are ways that we can start chipping away at this that I think that when we are in, when we were in our subcommittees, we talked about it. I think that it's going to have to be, everyone has to be ten toes in and they have to really commit that this is not an us versus them. This is an all district, all community, all students. Everybody has to have the M, the understanding that there is no enemy here. We all have to work together to keep local control over our budget and we all have to work together to keep these doors open with our schools, with our neighborhood schools. To do that, everybody has to take a hit. And I think that as we get closer to March and as we get closer to these decisions and if we're not lobbying in Sacramento and if we're not making education, local education, a priority, then we are doing it injustice to this body and its position and how it is supposed to make the decisions for the district. But I think that we have to stand in front and not hide behind the district decisions and we have to be all together knowing that our budget is our priority. But to what Dr. Moses said all the time as a CPO, you can do everything, but you can't have it. I forgot how you say it, but can you tell me how you say it, Dr. Moses?
You can have anything you want, but you can't have everything you want.
Right, so I think that with that, we need to prioritize and we need to be here in our prioritization about our budget and what it looks like. I'm complete. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. At this time, we're approaching ten o'clock. I'd like to extend the meeting, put a motion on the floor to extend the meeting until ten thirty. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's go to a vote to extend to ten thirty. Trustee Gonzalez, wait.
Yes.
Trustee Smith, words?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trust, I'm sorry, I'm looking this way. Trustee Wilson? Extend the meeting until ten thirty.
Yes.
Trustee Espinosa, Jr.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Um, yes, sir.
Yes.
Mama, yes. Okay, so I don't have too much to add to those two comments, except that I see a lot of reductions, which are great. But we need to make money and how we make money is through an attendance campaign. I'm not, I'm not in the school communications, but I haven't heard anything. We love your ki, I know there are different messages for different audiences and I've read, done some research on what works and what not, what not. We love your kid, we wanna see you. You know, I haven't seen any, any of that, how important attendance is. I think that's really, really important to just pound this into the ground. And for certain communities, the fiscal impact is gonna be important. So for cer, for certain communities, you can tell them, hey, every day that you take your kid out before vacation and you fly out a day early, that's costing us. And those people will respond, they really will. Not everyone, but I know who will. So there are different messages for different people and that has to be immediate. The biggest thing though is enrollment and on programs and what you wanna grow. What are you growing? What can you grow? Put a number out there, look at what we have to offer and find out what can we grow. I mean, the kids are here. I keep saying it over and over again. There are kids here, there are more kids here than ever before. It's a capture rate. And there has to be selective programs. This is what we're gonna grow, this is what we think we could get, and go get them. Set a goal and go get them. So I think it's really possible. And uh, yeah, and I think the board has to decide on some priorities. I mean, I don't think the strategic plan really gives us, I don't think it's a finished document that really tells us this is what we really need to invest in and that's board work that needs to get done quickly. You know, just to, you know, get a few things going that we really wanna protect and then we can, then we know that we're in line on that. So there's work to do there, but really, there's growth, there's growth. And while I see the, the cost management side, what I haven't seen for years is this is how we're, you know, there's upside and this is how we're gonna get it, get it. Thank you. Okay, so that concludes that item. And now we are moving on to action items and we'll move up E four, which is the cell phone resolution two, four, two, five, dash, five, one, cell phone usage.
Ms. Segura, this is your item. Go ahead.
Thank you and good evening. We are bringing forward tonight a resolution regarding cellphone use in schools. And a little bit of background on this, the Phone Free School Act was signed in September of twenty twenty-four. And what this bill does is it requires governing boards to adopt policy to limit or prohibit the use of smartphones while at school. This is a little bit of a departure from the twenty nineteen legislation, which granted school districts the authority to regulate the use. So the key shift is that we were previously authorized to regulate the use of phones. We are now required to regulate the use of phones. Uh, we have to do this by the twenty twenty-six school year and the policy has to be reviewed and adopted each school year. Next slide, please. So when we think about the impact that we would like to have from a resolution on cell phones, there's really three key pieces. We'd like improved academic outcomes, improved social emotional outcomes, and improved campus safety. Next slide, please. One thing to note is there's an emergent body of research around the shifting landscape that technology and supervision are creating. So if we think to an analog world, pre-cell phones, when students are in our classrooms or in our hallways, supervision is not perfect, but we largely know what's happening. As we've shifted into a digital world, a student can be right in front of us, physically safe and exposed to a world of emotional or psychological harm. And so we'd like to acknowledge that parents and educators are jointly really grappling with what appropriate limitations are in this new world and how to handle it. The Anxious Generation is a book that I would recommend to anyone who is seeking more information. It really is a comprehensive resource around what exposure to unlimited internet access unfettered resource is doing to our teens and how this access really impacts and stunts the development specifically of pre-teens and early adolescents. Next slide, please. So we are academic institutions and our primary goal is to educate students academically. And we know that cell phones become a challenge in the classroom and a distraction, a temptation. You know, the longer you can focus on a task, usually the more successful you are. And the cellphone is a constant thing that buzzes and pings and gives you access to the world outside of the classroom. Cell phones create an avenue to cheat or create shortcuts. And we know that they're creating diminished academic tasks, performance. In Spain, there was a twenty fifteen prohibition of cell phones and they found that bullying in schools decreased ten to eighteen percent. And in another study, uh, this one was in Great Britain, they showed that limiting cellphone use created an average gain of six percent academically and fourteen percent for students who were previously designated low achieving. Next slide, please. The social emotional impact of cellphone use is also incredibly strong. Uh, we know that the access to so, cell phones and specifically social media encourages unhealthy comparison among teens. Uh, and there really is fear of missing out. We know that our students see images that portray perfection or unrealistic expectations that they then strive for. And they create emotional distance between bullies and victims or even just student to student. We know that people will say things online that they wouldn't say to someone's face. And they act as a trauma amplifier. Things such as a schoolyard fight that we don't condone, but we know occasionally happen and can be taken care of and students can be supported with little lingering harm now can have lingering harm because they're replayed over and over and over again. And students not only experience the trauma of the fight itself, but the trauma of everybody's comments about the incident. Also, students who aren't even in the area now see it, both the psychological impact and the physical impact, and it creates fear for their own safety. Next slide, please. We also know that cell phones impact physical safety. Really, cell phones create a device where students can coordinate activity that adults can't monitor or see. They can bully students who aren't in the same room. And we know that students use cell phones and particularly social media to keep conflicts happening after mediations have occurred. We'll have students in conflict who are very clear that they are done with the conflict and it re-arises because they're constantly exposed to the opinions of others. And I added trauma amplifier on this slide again because I think this is a physical and emotional impact to our students. According to the New York Times, sixteen percent of students have reported that they have been bullied online. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of high-level research and there's some longitudinal studies from other countries that have long-term bans. But what about more locally? San Mateo High began implementing a cellphone ban in twenty nineteen. It was phased in. In twenty twenty-one, they became a cellphone-free campus. They have experienced since then a one percent reduction in their rate of suspension and a three percent increase in the perception of school safety. However, I was able to speak with their principal and she said that the impact goes far beyond what the hard data shows. She said that teachers report that their classrooms are more productive, happy spaces. That they actually feel that because they're in solidarity, that cell phones are not used on campus, that it's reduced the burden of enforcement, that they have improved peer-to-peer interactions and actually the focus and the product and the conversation in the classroom has improved. And she said she has teachers that say they would quit if they went back. Um, so she had pretty positive things to say. Next slide, please. Greenwood Academy is also a cellphone-free campus. And I spoke to Principal Johnson and he had similar things to say as Principal Shu from San Mateo. He said that they do have fewer office referrals. He really emphasized that students actually really hold back when they know other students have cellphone access because there's a fear of being filmed or recorded. And so he said they've noticed that students are more willing to participate in lunchtime activities or in class because they understand their interaction is with the people in the space, not with a wider audience. I asked him, how do the students feel? And he said, you know, the students, no student wants to give up their cellphone, let's be clear. But they will grudgingly admit that they need the support, that they need the help in putting their phone away. And this is in line with what research tells us that really the cellphone use is becoming so addictive for teens that asking them to make the decision alone isn't fair. Next slide, please. Should you all decide to move forward with the resolution this evening, we do have a proposed rollout that is in line with the legislation. Assuming you approve it, we will immediately begin the gathering stakeholder feedback phase. And this was something that, uh, Principal Shu from San Mateo said was critical in their rollout. Parents have questions. In theory, people understand the need, but they need an opportunity to ask every question and to help us think through pieces of the plan that we won't think through alone. We then also need an education campaign. People need time to sit with and understand the why, to do their own research should they so choose, and to think through how this works for them, their family, their classroom. Then in the summer in August, we'd like to launch the implementation at school sites, monitor, implement. And then we need to reflect after the first quarter. We know that this is a culture shift. We know it will not be perfect and we know we'll have learnings along the way. And so this piece of coming back to refine based on what we've seen and learned is really critical. Next slide, please. We have a few procedural considerations. Uh, once again, the partnership with stakeholders is incredibly important. We also want to remember that when we're working through policy enforcement, we really need to remain restorative and educational. We don't want to roll out a policy that increases exclusionary practice. And lastly, right now, we don't know that we have the capacity to purchase yonder pouches, which have been a strategy, um, at Greenwood and at San Mateo High. And so while we would love to have a physical device to support us in this, we don't know that we will. And so we need to plan, assuming that this is a culture shift, um, not a physical lockup of the cellphones. And that in this communication and patience will be key to our implementation. Next slide, please. So you've all been waiting now for the resolution language. Now therefore be it resolved that the district will adopt clear and consistent guidelines in accordance with the California state legislation to prohibit the use of cellphone use and wearable communication devices in schools in accordance with Education Code forty-eight, nine, oh, one point seven. The district will work in collaboration with parents and guardians to ensure that families understand the reasoning behind cellphone guidelines and support the district's effort to provide focused, distraction-free learning environment. And in accordance with Ed Code forty-eight, nine, zero, one point seven, the district will periodically review and assess the impact of cellphone policies on student achievement, safety and overall school climate, at least every five years. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Country Unified School District will develop and adopt a comprehensive policy explicitly outlining expectations that there will be zero unauthorized cellphone use during school hours. This policy will include clear guidelines, including consequences for violating the cellphone policy. Full implementation of the policy will begin in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And until then, schools should continue to follow the cellphone policies outlined in the Student Parent Handbook. Site policies and protocols will be reviewed to ensure that they are in accordance with district policy and that the security of student devices is taken into consideration. The policy will be communicated to students, staff and families with an emphasis on fostering a collaborative effort to create focused and productive learning environments. Regular reviews and updates will be conducted to ensure that the policy remains effective and aligned with the district's goals. Next slide, please. We just wanted to include references, um, in case there is a desire for the board or the public to look at any of the research on their own. Um, and at this point, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there any public comments on this item?
We have no public comment.
Great. Uh, board members, time is very tight. If I may ask for your one most critical question, if you have one. Student Tracy Wilson, go over the head.
I'm just curious, if the pouches are not going to be used to ban cellphone use, then what do these bans actually look like?
Yeah, so if you think about it, a yonder pouch is a device of control. It's not a device of policy. So it means that we're asking people to comply with the rule. And then there's a consequence if they don't, um, the same as any other school rule. The nice thing about the pouches is they take temptation away, right? And so we know that without that, we're asking students to really make a mature decision on their own.
What do these consequences look like?
So that has to be developed. Um, and so this is really a resolution to say this is what we're moving forward with. Right now, all of our schools do a little bit different enforcement, but most of it includes if a student violates a cellphone policy, is it locked in the office? Does a parent pick it up? Does the student get it at the end of the period? We know it looks a little bit different at every school and that's something we would need to streamline.
Any other questions? I'll move to, uh.
I just have, oh, sorry. I just have one question, kind of just following up with, um, what Tracy Luke Wilson mentioned. You mentioned how there's not going to be basically an implementation using the yonder pouches. How are these, these are not exactly going to be all day, like restrictions? Like let's say for lunch or like a break, for example, can they have like their phone back or like they're off to like, oh, I gotta go somewhere real quick. Like let's say for another example, that like a student may have an emergency or something that they need like parent contact or resource to network to be able to assist them at that time. How does that work?
Yeah, so the intent is that it is all day, including passing periods and lunch. Um, and that actually is the only way you really achieve some of the social, emotional and safety goals. We do know that students need to communicate, right? And so, um, when I talk to the San Mateo High Principal, how, how they do it, and it's something we could think about mimicking here, is let's say, um, a student knows something's going on at home and it's raining and they're like, I need to be able to check in. They ask that teacher send the student to the office and the student's given a space to make that phone call, to do that check-in, but it's not them standing in the hallway making the phone call, right? That there's sort of a, a situation. Lunch is a little different because I think students, particularly in high school, are used to just having access. So we would need to think through, if you're going to make a phone call at lunch, maybe there's a designated area or space where people know, hey, you know, this is allowed in here, but you're not just standing, you know, in the middle of the cafeteria breaking a rule. Um, I don't think the intent is to totally stifle communication, but it is to make sure that it's happening in a productive way.
That answers my, that answers my question. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can you talk to us about the, the speed of change in technology, right? Because you can take my cellphone, but I can do everything from my watch. And then next year you may be able to take my watch, but I can do everything from a pair of glasses or something like you click on it or whatever. So with the speed of technology, how are we keeping up with the policy? Because we know the state moves a lot slower than what actually happens. So can you speak a little bit to, a little bit about what that looks like?
Yeah, I think it's going to be our constant challenge, to be honest. Um, in the book, The Anxious Generation, he really talks about how since two thousand and ten, which is when social media went to cellphones, our, our teens have basically quadrupled the rates of anxiety. And if you think about it, if from a historical perspective, fifteen years isn't that long usually. And the advances and changes that our youth have experienced are now something that we are on the back end trying to deal with. And so we are now trying to get ahead of this. Um, the state did also just sign legislature requiring us to now limit social media use. And I think this is all going to go together. Um, and I think the critical thing is really our tech filters and our filters on our devices work pretty well on our internet and our devices. And that's the lever that allows us to keep up. When students have access from their own devices, we lose the support that we can give them.
Okay, we are super short on time. Would anybody like to put a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'll make a motion. Thank you. Um, I'm moved that we approve resolution number two, four, two, five, dash, five, one, regarding cellphone use in the school district.
Sir, a second. I'll second. Okay, great. Uh, if I may ask, comments be held because we're going to be talking about this as a policy. So you'll have all that time to flesh out, this is what I want to see, what I think, what I hear in policy. This just really kicks off the process. And with that, if we'll go to a vote, our student Tracy Wilson.
Is there no quick comment at all?
If you wouldn't mind saving it, because we're gonna, you're gonna, oh, you're not gonna be, you might not be on the board. Go ahead, quickly.
President Reckler, I, I do think this one is really important to me. So I wouldn't want it to fail because of lack of comments, because in governance, we talked about it for seven months. So I want to make sure that we give it, I know that we're in time, but this is really important, I think, for students, administrators and teachers. Um, and it's just obviously the start, like you said, but without this, then staff won't get the direction to do the policy. So could we do like a minute comments? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll keep a super brief, but a couple of points. One fear I have is that the good aspects of cellphone use will be stopped and the bad aspects will continue because students that want to get their hands on something will. And I see it leading to many clashes between educators and students. I don't believe that, uh, this resolution should be passed if there's no consequences set in stone. And in terms of anxiety rates, I believe that there's many factors involved. Personally, my biggest factor would be the increase in the selectiveness of college admissions. And I, I feel most of my friends can attest to that too. Um, yeah, that confirms my comment. If there wasn't anything more true than what Luke Wilson said, trustee Luke Wilson said about college admissions, and I don't know what is, because I've been checking all my posts and emails for just any admissions. But, um, there's one thing that comes to mind is when I think of these things is that hearing on the news about, oh, God forbid, one of the worst things that ever happened is a school shooting to happen. Oftentimes the first responders, when they respond to these emergencies, it's coming from the kids' phones in these situations. And that's almost every single school shooting that occurs in this country. And I'm not saying that that's ever going to happen, God forbid. But it was something to take in consideration of flexibility of how a phone is, can be utilized in a way on the students' ends, while also developing that maturity to when to put it away. Because this thing could be the best thing ever and then the worst thing ever. And I'm speaking from experience too, because it's can be a distraction at times as a student. But also we need to take in consideration maybe more flexibility, not amongst letting just students roam around with their phones, but more so how they can just utilize it in a proper way. Because I've seen teachers and professors utilize phones in a lot of their projects for like statistics and all these things, data collecting and a lot of times students do these projects based on like phone use technologies. So I think this one excellent way we can utilize that usage. But of course, this is not a one said, one done thing. This is going to be a continuation of things like how trustee Smith Foles mentioned about like the advancement of technology every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, President. Um, thank you both, student trustees, for sharing that perspective. Also, I think, uh, Ms. Sigler, there's a lot of research around the danger and the problems that technology has caused. We have heard the mental health crisis, our district suffers of suicide, of, um, anxiety, of depression, and a lot of it comes from our overuse in technology. And a big piece is cellphone use. Uh, for the last ten years, what I've heard from principal, high school principals as a huge problem is the use of technology without the accountability and the supports. Um, and there's a reason why the US General, General Surgeon and, you know, the governor are saying this is a problem that we need to fix. So the governance committee talked for seven months on, on really the research and the why it needs to happen. And there's something we didn't bring a policy was because we want to solve those problems that were brought up with stakeholders to make sure it's done right. Because the student trust is all right, if, you know, uh, there's a safety issue, we want students to have their phones. That's why it's not a ban where you can't have your phone in your person. It's, it can, it has to be stored in your backpack, right? Um, and that's what's different from this to other policies that are around the state. That's not what we want, what we wanted. The purpose is not for students to not have access, it's just so that it's not at school. But if it, there need, there needs to be, uh, that situation, they'll have it. Sorry, I went a little bit over time, but I, I want to talk about that piece because it is essential so that we can start the conversations. So I may ask that we pass it and that then with the next six months, staff really engages with community. Once students, students have not part of the initial conversations in the governance committee on what that would look like, including the consequences. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think to everyone's point, education, education, education. I think that if you don't educate about the why and if you don't turn around and educate about the accountability level or the response to if it happens, also think that if you don't provide those necessary, um, social, emotional skills, then everybody's just going to store it up to after school. And then as soon as the bell rings, it's going to be the wild, wild west again, right? I can't have it, I can't have it from bell to bell, but I can then go across the street and report the fight. Or I can go over here and do this, or I'm going to go to the bathroom and use my phone. So I think it's one of those things that students are the most craftiest individuals around. And we need to recognize that and also have some grace that if you take it away immediately or change something immediately and not give the why and give the, the grace to it, then it's going to create the very thing that we don't want, which is like a pushback against it. So I think that we do it educationally, gently and with students and not just against them. I'm complete.
Thank you. And with that, you guys have anything? Okay. And with that to the vote, student trustee Wilson.
So this is strictly for discussion? Voting on is for discussion on the policy?
The motion is to approve the resolution, which kicks off the process of a policy creation with community feedback, student feedback, and that's also in the law. You have to do it.
Yes.
Is there, oh, yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee, clerk in Yana.
Yes.
Trustee Consil, sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Foles.
Smith Foles, yes.
And I am a yes as well. Okay, in four minutes, can we jam through? Uh, can we move E three, which is the sunshining of the, uh, SSA contract? And then save Williams and variable term waivers for Saturday? Yes, okay. So if we can move up E three, sunshining of the contract?
Dr. Johnson, this is your item. Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you Superintendent Dr. Moses and President Reckler and members of the board. The district is proposing to engage in good faith bargaining with regard to the specific articles.
The district is proposing to engage in good faith bargaining with regard to the specific articles sunshine by the district and the School Supervisors Association IFPTE Local Two. Specifically, Article Three, Salary and the Salary Schedule. Article Four, Hiring Promotions. Article Five, Benefits. The district and SSA reserve the right to open other articles as needed during the negotiations and will exchange proposals at the bargaining table. The district reserves the right to add, amend, or delete proposals during contract negotiations. SSA also reserves the same right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there any public comments on this item?
President Reckler, sorry, you just got to do the, uh, opening the public hearing and then you close, public comment and then you close it, um, right after.
Thank you for that. Okay, so the hearing is now open. We are accepting a public comment in the hearing.
We have no public comment.
Great. And now I am closing the hearing. All right, there we go. Okay, are there any questions from board? Seeing none, may I have a res, may I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept, um, the, uh, excuse me. Sorry, the, um, initial, uh, can someone help me with the wording? I'm so sorry. The receiver of the initial proposals, uh, for opening a negotiation for SSA. I apologize, it's late.
Not a problem. I'll second that. Is there any questions on this? Any comments? Good, seeing none, go to a vote. Oh, they can't, they, they're not, okay, go ahead.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Consil, sorry?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Foles?
Smith Foles, yes.
Reckler is a yes. Motion passes unanimously. We are out of time. So we are going to move E one, Williams, and E two, variable term waivers to Saturday. And I'm adjourning this meeting at ten twenty-nine PM. Thank you, everybody.